Welcome, everyone. This is our regular commission meeting, Wednesday. Regular commission meeting, City of West Miami, Wednesday, August 21st. I apologize for the delay. It is 7:43. And if I could have our chief for the invocation, please.
Let us bow our heads and ask for God's blessings. Lord God in heaven, we thank you for the unending love, grace, and compassion you bestow upon us each and every day. We ask that you continue to rain down your unifying grace and blessings upon our country and our community. We are in need of your unending compassion and your heavenly mercy, especially upon those recently killed and wounded in several senseless attacks across our great nation. Please keep the countless thousands of police officers, firefighters, and our military personnel, who bravely and diligently strive to keep us safe every day. Bring them home at the end of their respective tours of duty and grant them peace and serenity in all they do. Help those who serve us and those who are battling internal demons that may have driven many police officers, firefighters, and soldiers to commit suicide in the recent months. As we embark on today's meeting, help and guide our elected officials in making the best and correct decisions always. Help those in our community who are lonely, suffering, or ill. Pour out your love, mercy, and healing on those most in need. And to this we all say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. And for the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, we have Mr. Joe Paz.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paz. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Item 3, call. Mayor Ronde Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Candy de Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Eric Diaz-Padron.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum for the record. City Manager Orlando Villar, City Attorney Jose Villalobos, and City Clerk Hernando Gonzalez are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item?
Item 4, presentation of minutes for approval for July 17, 2019, regular commission meeting.
Motion.
Call the vote?
You want me to call?
I'm sorry, never mind.
Are all in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Presentation of minutes for approval for July 25, 2019, special commission meeting.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Presentation of minutes for approval for July 31, 2019, special commission meeting.
I need a motion?
Motion.
I want to make an explanation. I'm going to second this. That, Mayor, I don't see any discrepancy, so that's why I vote, I second again.
Thank you. Vice Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item?
Item 5, public comments.
Do we have anyone registered to speak this evening, Madam Clerk?
We have someone registered to speak on item 11A. But no, not from the public on any, on none, not yet. No, Madam Mayor. You'll be called.
So then that resident will speak during 11A?
During 11A, yes.
During this time, okay. Is there anyone here who perhaps hasn't signed up that would like to speak at this time? Okay. Next item?
Item 6, report of the city manager.
Madam Mayor, do you wish to leave my report for the end of the agenda this evening? We could take it up now or at the end of the meeting?
I know we had some items that we wanted to take out of order. So it is your recommendation to proceed with the items we wanted to take out of order?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, Madam Clerk, we're going to begin with item 11A under new business. Since that's a public hearing, we're going to take that one first.
Okay, Madam Mayor. Should I read the item? You want me to proceed? Item 11, under new business agenda items, item 11A. This is a public hearing. Property address, 6480 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144. This is special use permit number 201903. Applicant, Frank's Fresh Fruit Mini Market Abreu 2 LLC, 64, 68 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144. Applicant requests a special use permit for the property at 6480 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144. The property is zoned for C commercial, and the applicant is requesting to renovate existing building to allow a produce market with seating area along the perimeter. Applicant will redevelop the property for proposed mini-market zoning ordinance to 82, section 281.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. The Planning and Zoning Board had a first public hearing on July 23rd, 2019, where the application was presented for the Frank's Fresh Fruit Mini Market at 6480 Southwest 8th Street. That's the old location of the Covadonga Restaurant, whereby they were going to renovate the property by removing all the existing paneling that the property has and make it open to the air. Right now, where the restaurant has its seating, that will become the area for the presentation of the fruit bins. And then they will provide a new canopy around the property, allowing for outdoor seating in that area of the canopy. Both areas are shuttered with accordion shutters at night. And as far as requirements for parking and lighting, they meet all requirements under our zoning code. The zoning board requested that they adhere to the recommendations of the memorandum, and they voted all in favor, three to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Penna. Since this is a public hearing, I will be opening the public hearing at this time. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Could we have the presenter up to speak on the item?
Good afternoon, distinguished Commissioners. My name is Rado Mes Batista, and I'm here on behalf of Frank's Fresh Fruit Mini Market. As already addressed, sole purpose is a special use permit for this mini-market cafeteria. If you have any questions or I can assist.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, proceed.
Okay. You request open 7 o'clock in the morning to midnight.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes.
I have a question. Is a mini-market, fresh food, what kind of business you expect to have at midnight in 8th Street, 65th Avenue?
It's a cafeteria, fresh fruit mini-market, so it's going to be an eatery indoors. And we were trying to allow the maximum amount of clientele possible. Obviously, the time will be dictated by the type of business that is derived at the location.
I'm sorry, could you repeat what you just said at the end? What was that?
I said, the times that the business is going to be open will be basically derived by the type of business that the business has, the clientele that is frequencing or frequenting the establishment. So we were looking for 7 to 12, but it may vary, and it kind of depends on how business is.
I have another question.
Yes, proceed.
Have you been driving 8th Street in the middle of the night in our neighborhood? Where this place is?
I've been in Miami for over 20 years, so yes.
No, no, I don't mean in Miami. I mean here, West Miami, 8th Street and 65th Avenue, in the middle of the night? Have you been driving there?
I have not. Or very, very few times have I gone by there, that hour. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the table?
Yes. Is alcohol going to be sold there at this establishment?
Wine and beer is the only thing that's going to be sold.
So, yes?
Yes.
So, you see from?
The intent, if I may, of the wine and beer would be for the meals. With the cafeteria, it isn't going to be a bar per se or something to that effect.
Well, you're, you know, you're pretty close to a residential area, and I don't see enough buffer. So to say that you're going to open, stay open till midnight, to me, that's too long. If you're going to sell, you're going to do things outside, you're going to play music too, I imagine, right? Loud music?
No, that was one of the conditions, that there would be no loud music.
But there's going to be noise. There's going to be music.
Low-key music, anything that you would hear in any given?
Next to a residential area.
Sir, this was an existing restaurant that was there.
Yes, but you're asking for a special use permit.
Yes.
Yeah. And we have conditions.
And we comply with all those conditions.
Well, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the time. I'm concerned about the noise. I'm concerned about the alcohol sales. You know, open till midnight, that's just going to create problems. You know, the resident quality of life there is going to suffer. So we're going to have to rethink this and maybe change the time that they can stay open till.
If I may add, the primary business is a fresh fruit mini-market theme, selling fruits and vegetables. Aside from that, they want to have the ability of a cafeteria to sell some Latin food, and that's the gist of it, so.
I actually have a question on that. I had it on my list because I read very closely the entire, your entire item that's here in the agenda. We have a lot of supporting documentation. And I'm a little, I need a little clarification onto exactly what this is because on different documents here, it's being described in many different ways. Is it a produce market? Is it a mini-market? Is it a cafeteria? Is it a restaurant?
I don't know.
What, let me ask, how do you, what do you envision this establishment as? Are you going along the Whole Foods line? You know, and do you envision this as a Whole Foods market? Do you envision it as a farmer's market? Do you envision it as a Palacio de los Juegos? What do you envision this establishment as becoming?
It's more along lines of palacios, a fruit mini-market. I'm using mini-market, sell fruit, palacios, that everybody knows on 57th and 8th, they sell fruit. And their establishment seems to be catered more along the lines of different foods. This is going to be catered more along the fruit side and selling different fruits.
Fruits or foods?
Fruits, fruits.
I saw fruits, I saw food, I saw beer, I saw wine, I saw?
Well, the cafeteria, there's going to be existing, there's a, there's wine and beer that was established at that location for the business.
As it is today, right now, you mean?
As it is today.
The restaurant?
As the restaurant.
So are you looking to transfer that beer-wine license?
Yes.
Is that what you're looking to do?
Yes, that's what we're looking to do.
Mayor, I?
The description is just really broad, really, it encompasses a lot of different aspects, so I just, I wanted some clarification as to what you really were looking to put there. Okay, yes, Vice Mayor. I have other questions, but I will yield to my Vice Mayor.
No, I just want to elaborate something in this. This is a commercial area, right? And what used to be a restaurant, Covadonga, was a restaurant inside. Was a parking lot outside, but the restaurant was inside, normal restaurant. Normally, they close about 10. And now you have an idea like a Palacio de los Juegos, this popular thing coming in our area in Miami, all over the county. And these open stores, the parking lots create some kind of noise when the people talk, you know, outside. And then if you close 12, you will be until 1:00, they're cleaning, people around. If you close 10, you will be people around until 11:00. So you close 9, will be people around, you know, almost until 10:00. Now, because it's a commercial area, it's normal that this qualify for a mini-market, qualify for these things because it's a commercial area. But the point, and they are to comply with many things, the conditions that the city request from them, noise, lights, many things. But the point is that in our area, the time to be open in that is a very residential area in both sides. Too late is a complication for the neighbors. The neighbor do not want that kind of activity too late. So my idea, I'm here, can you make it same business open until 9:00?
We would prefer 10:00, but if 9:00 is what, the commission's going to have a tendency to favor, we would concede.
Because I don't think in 8th Street, in this area, after 9:00, you will be, have no more business, not much, not too many business. If you, if you driving in this area, if you make it previous to the idea to open there, if you scout this area, 8th Street, the only thing you find middle, in the middle of the night, and I don't recommend you, in the middle of the night, to be open there. I mean, there's not much traffic, not much customers. And I think until 9:00, can you make the business? 7:00 in the morning, go fruit, shakes, that's what I did, right? Fruit, shakes, cafe con leche, coffee, bananas. Because you are not intend to sell beer until the middle of the night, people hanging in the counter, that's not your idea.
It's not a public.
Because you cannot put those places here. You cannot open, I mean, but now can you make the business until 9:00 PM? 7:00 in the morning until 9:00?
Okay, very well. We can change down to 9:00, that would be the turning key.
Okay, I have a question. If you, if you said this, and I'm sorry if I missed it. This is all going to be open, open area during the day, correct? So you'll be able to see all the way into your establishment from the street?
Correct.
And the evenings, how do you, what's going to close this, your business?
Aluminum courting, shutters.
Okay. And I don't see, I mean, this is pretty vague as far as your drawings, any additional landscaping? Are you adding any landscaping?
No.
Like, for instance, I prefer, I prefer not to see fruit bins from each, from the street.
No.
I prefer to see some sort of landscaping or buffer between the sidewalk and, and the establishment.
Very well.
Is that possible?
That's possible.
Any other concerns or questions from the table?
Well, no. Because the, the city, you see the recommendations?
Yeah, I did.
The conditions, they will comply with all this, the noise and the lights and that. Now, beer and wine is the Florida State Department. And we have a good police department that may control if something is wrong is there. I am not afraid about that because our police is very professional. And do you know that, right?
Yes, sir.
That we have a tough neighborhood in that way. I mean, not tough, very strictly by the law, is what it is, right?
Compliance.
Mr. Penna, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, go, continue, I'm sorry.
The main, my main reason to this was the timing. Until the middle of the night, no way was said to be open there because no business and sometimes attract the wrong people. That our experience in our street through the years, calle 8th, 8th Street. So my idea is to cut the hours. I mean, to put the hours that is good for them, they agree, 7 to 9:00, 9:00 o'clock, you already ate, you drink coffee, because after that, this is a working neighborhood. This is not a, you know, a neighborhood hanging around people. We don't have that in 8th Street, in this area.
Let me ask Mr. Penna a question. Mr. Penna, I know our code compliance only goes so far, so we're not going to be inspecting the quality or the health, the health reasons behind this fruit. Who does that type of inspection on fruit stand, so to speak? Is that the Department of?
The Health Department.
Health Department, okay. Because I'm concerned, you know, fruit sitting outside, you know, the heat, you know, the bugs, flies, whatever. Is this going to be air-conditioned? It's going to be open? Is this going to be completely air-conditioned?
It's going to be open.
So the air conditioning is where?
Inside the unit, inside the structure is where there'll be air conditioning.
In the food preparation area. So the part where your tables are is not air-conditioned?
That's around the perimeter, underneath.
You have no seating inside? Okay. Commission?
So, just to be clear, so they agreed to shut down at 9:00?
Yes.
Finito.
Yes.
No music, no food, no drink, 9:00, shut down, correct?
Correct.
This is clear? And you agree?
Client agree. We agree.
But that means your employees will be, I mean, obviously, once you shut down, you have to clean up and make your preparations, so you foresee your establishment literally closing maybe an hour later? I mean?
No. This is a food market, so it's not a restaurant where there's a lot of cleanup. Over here is a matter of closing the shutters up, the aluminum shutters, shutting down, cleaning up a small portion of the cafeteria. So I don't see this going much more than about 20 minutes, a max half an hour.
Commissioner, you've been very quiet. Do you have any questions? Any other questions from the table?
No. What I suggest was 7:00 in the morning to 9:00 PM.
Okay.
Tropical is, this is a story, it's closing by 9:00 or 10:00. It's a market.
Sure.
Aesthetically, I'm going to also ask if, going to ask for some sort of landscaping or buffer or planters or something between your establishment and the sidewalk? I want to see it more aesthetically pleasing from, from the street or sidewalk area than viewing fruit stands, or fruit bins, I should say. Is that acceptable to you?
Sure. We were thinking along the lines of some coconut trees or palm trees, something to that effect.
Something, yes.
Sure.
That, Mr. Penna, is that, would that work? I'm not sure, I don't think it could be planted. It would have to be in pots because I believe that is concrete area. Does the, there is ground there? So hedge, some sort of, I just want to make a little bit more, a little more eye-appealing from the sidewalk.
Sure.
That works?
Sure.
Okay.
Now, I want to ask again something. I'm pretty sure you make, if you, the planning, the business plan you have, because we don't want it that you don't, you don't be successful, we want you to be successful. But at the same time, we like to have a happy neighbors and a happy city, and the happy owners of the business, everybody do it. Now, I want to be sure, what we're talking about tonight, 7:00 in the morning to 9:00 PM, you can make, leave it there, right? You can do business there.
Yes.
It's the time for the fruit, the lunch, the dinner.
Yes.
Because it's open space, and that's a problem we have. In our neighborhood, you know, has certain way of life. And we try to make happy you and our people and we. It's a, it's a bilateral, it's for the two sides. I don't want you get out of here and you say, oh, they call me 9:00, it's not good. If you think it's not good, tell me. If you want to, but?
The only markets here is accepted.
Because, because we have to keep our neighbors happy.
Certainly. Understood.
As far as food waste, I mean, the restaurant right now, Mr. Penna, has places, the garbage bins or whatever, that remains in the same location as far as picking up the, because what I've seen, and I don't want to see here, is all the times when you go by these fruit stands or whatever we want to call the other locations throughout the city, is you see the produce boxes stacked up on the side of the building, you know, where they've taken the fruit out, and it's very unsightly. So I want to be sure that whatever garbage or waste is properly contained in whatever units is going to be, you know, taken from.
Sir.
I don't want to see, you know, along the side of the building or the back of building, you know, piles of fruit boxes and, and cut-up fruit waste and things like that.
Mayor, let me wrap around with these two gentlemen with you. You understand the English I speak, or you prefer I tell you in Spanish? Habla español? I'm preferring español.
I think Spanish for my client.
No, he doesn't know, but I am. Lo entendieron español a tu socio. Que lo que queremos es que ustedes sean, que sean, que ganen el dinero. Nosotros no queremos cerrar el negocio. Queremos que el negocio sea, sea bueno, sea productivo, pero tenemos que tener nuestros vecinos, nuestros neighbors. Entiende? No queremos cerrar el negocio, queremos que tu negocio vaya bien.
Vice Mayor, if you would, one moment. Madam Manager, could you translate, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No, 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 I just want to tell in Spanish. I'm telling them what I said before in English. I only want for, if one of them do not speak proper English, I don't speak perfect like you, but still.
No, this is for the sake of the audience, whoever doesn't speak Spanish, I wanted a translation for their sake as well.
No, but remember, this is a bilingual county officially.
Absolutely, but I still wanted a translation for those who don't understand Spanish.
So in this caso, en este caso, si él no entendió bien, decirle, queremos que tu negocio vaya bien, pero necesitamos que los vecinos sean amigos tuyos, no se produzca enemita. Por eso decimos a las 9 de la noche para que todo el mundo esté contente. Correct? No se recuerde, no haber música alta, no, no haber problema. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Just to be clear, I think our mayor has stated that as a condition to the special use permit, you must maintain the parking lot, you know, clean, that there cannot be any unsightly garbage or boxes or containers next to the dumpster, everything needs to go in the dumpster. So if we observe that, we're going to come back to you, and we're going to tell you, look, this was a condition.
Okay.
And we can rescind our permit. So if it's not kept clean, tidy, clean, speak in span, as they say, you're going to have issues, you're going to have problems, because I'll be the first one to bring it up and take away your permit. So that was your condition, right?
Yes, yes, it was.
So, is that clear?
That's clear. It's understood, accepted.
Okay. Yes?
Mayor, if I follow the planning, planning zoning that made the recommendation for this business, I make a motion with a condition. Mr. Penna, are you here?
Yes, sir.
With the condition, and the record please, 7:00 in the morning to 9:00 PM, that's my, my motion. I make a motion to approve the business.
May I read the resolution, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please do, Madam Clerk.
Item 11B, this is a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, for site plan approval for special use permit as requested by the applicant, Abreu 2 LLC, 6468 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144, for the operation of that certain business, Frank's Fresh Fruit Mini Market, at 6480 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144. Reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Board on July 11, 2019, and July 23, 2019, and recommended by staff, providing for requirements for special use permit of a certain building in the City of West Miami, and requiring certain improvements and other terms and conditions as stated in the recommendation by staff, providing for effective date. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Suarez.
May I be heard, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We want to be sure that
We want to be sure that the applicant understands that any violation of the business is also inure to the violation of the owner of the property. So it isn't that the tenant is going to do something and the owner is gonna be immune. Uh, the owner is responsible for any and all violations, uh, conducted at the premises, okay?
And we do have the owner of the property here, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And you've under, fully understand our attorney's direction?
Fully understand.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sure that everything should be the same way.
Would you identify yourself, please?
Uh, excuse me, oh, my name is Carlos Abreu, I'm the owner of the property. Uh, sixty-four, sixty-eight, I mean, sixty-four, eighty, Southwest Eighth Street.
And the name of the corporation is?
Uh, Abreu L L C. So I'm sure that everything should be, uh, a hundred percent.
So if there's any fine or any violation, it would inure to your property and to your corporation, you understand that?
A hundred percent.
Okay, sir.
And you are local, correct, sir?
Yes, I am.
Because we have had issues sometimes with landlord or, or property owners who are, who are not, don't reside here and then they kinda lose track so.
I'm actually, I'm actually next door.
Okay.
Of the property. I'm at sixty-four, sixty-eight, and this property is sixty-four, eight, right next to each other.
Perfect, perfect, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot that he is the owner of the Body Shop, West Miami Body Shop. I'm sorry, I did not recognize you.
How are you?
He, because he now, he have a artistic, you know, luck there. And artistic, are you called local?
Yes, yes.
And he's the owner of West Miami Body Shop. They, he owns that property and the, and the, and the property next door where the restaurant is. Oh, I'm sorry, I did not recognize you.
It's okay.
So now I feel much more comfortable, you will maintain this property to the level that we expect in the City of West Miami.
I guarantee you, along with saliva, that will, that remain the, uh, the way West Miami wants to keep it up.
Thank you, sir.
We know, we know where to find you too. We know where to find you too.
Regarding the garbage, it's gonna stay the same way it used to before, it's an enclosed place, they hold, have everything. Regarding the music, it's not gonna have loud music, that's already, it's being, it's just a normal music, you know, on the stove, it's not gonna be long loud. And so basically, it'll be, I think it's gonna be a good thing for the city.
Our issue is that...
I'm very optimistic about it.
Our, our issue is that you're really close to a residential area.
Right.
So we have to like, you know...
Find the balance.
Remember, there, there used to be a restaurant there and then...
But it wasn't closed.
All right.
It was all enclosed.
So basically, he knows he's gotta keep it, the music's just gotta be an ambient music, it's not gonna be loud or anything like that. There's not gonna be no speakers outside or anything like that. Go, I'm gonna have music for the inside.
If you had everything enclosed, we probably wouldn't be having this decision.
And then what he means is he wants to open it to nine o'clock, you know, so basically, one out of ten, because he has another, uh, uh, property where he's, opens it to ten, but nine is fine with him.
Great.
And again, it's not gonna be, you know, I'm sure that everything will be a hundred percent.
Thank you very much, Mayor. He has been a very good neighbor and a very good, uh, in the, in the commercial area.
Yes, now that I, now that I know that.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I did not recognize you. You look younger than the last time I saw you.
Now that I know he is the owner of that property, I, I feel much more comfortable in, in knowing that he will, he will continue to keep it, um, to the level of, to, to the level of the standards that we require in West Miami.
Madam Mayor, there's a, uh, motion on the table.
Yes, okay, I need a second.
A second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes. Commissioner Blanes, on your board?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, we are going to continue taking, uh, the next item out of order. So at this time, if we can proceed to eleven, eleven H, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, item eleven H, resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the City Manager to renew the October first, two thousand and nineteen through September thirty, two thousand and twenty, medical, dental, vision and prescription programs with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, providing for effective date.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, this evening, I'd like to introduce, um, a representative, uh, from the League of Cities, whom we work with very closely, Liz, Lindsay Larson. Um, she's prettier than, than Erin Carper. Welcome, Lindsay, to the city. Uh, basically, she's gonna talk to you about, uh, the renewal process. We have entertained the projected increases in the preliminary budget and now in the tentative budget. My report contemplates a, an important piece moving forward, but I think tonight we're here to talk about the renewal and our relationship with the League, which we have a, a great, uh, insurance program. Uh, if we could hear pretty much a summary from Lindsay, I would appreciate that.
Yes, Lindsay, your name and address for the record, and you have the floor.
Sure, my name is Lindsay Larson. I live at fourteen, sixty-eight, um, Meadowlark Drive, Titusville, Florida.
Wow.
Yeah, three, two, seven, eight, zero.
Hope you're not driving home tonight, I...
I am not, I have a, a hotel up in, uh, North Lauderdale, so...
Would you bring the mic up, please?
Sure. I am kinda tall, sorry. Um, but I am here today on behalf of the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust to talk to you guys about renewal. Uh, West Miami had a fantastic renewal this year, um, definitely below trend, medical trend. Medical trend in this area right now is around ten percent. Um, and you guys did come below medical trend for renewal. And I believe the renewal is in your packets, um, to see. Same with, uh, the dental renewal. You guys came in below trend on that as well. And then vision stayed flat this year. So all around a great, uh, renewal for the city. Your employees are engaged in our Hometown Health Wellness Program, which helps keep that renewal low, uh, for the city. Um, we, you know, because it is a small, um, population, because of HIPAA rules, we can't see how claims are ran or anything like that. Um, but we've always promised, you know, to give the city the best renewal and the one that they deserved, um, and the most fair renewal. So what you guys got was the best that we could do this year. Um, the city is doing great. Like I said, they're participating in Hometown Health and that has definitely helped you on the backend, helped your culture stay healthy, um, and not have any catastrophic health claims come through. So, any questions regarding the health renewal?
So in summary, Lindsay, you're saying that our, our coverage is the same?
Coverage is the same.
But there is no increase?
There is an increase, yes.
There is an increase.
Nine point one percent, if I am not mistaken.
I'm sorry, that's what you said, we, we were below the ten percent average.
You were, yeah, yeah.
Okay, now I understand.
You were below the ten percent average, yep.
Okay, understood. So nine point one percent increase, but we're below the, the, the average?
Yep.
Okay.
And what's driving up the, 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 the increase here is the cost of prescription from what you and I spoke briefly about and Erin confirmed, and obviously, the industry, the cost of medication is rising to exorbitant amount of monies and that's driving the pool program, which is where, where we're at. And, and every medical plan is driving cost up.
Correct, um, yes, and the pool was driven by that as well this year too. So, um, the, the small group pool was around a renewal, around ten, eleven percent. So you guys did come below that, so it was a, a good renewal for you guys.
And so our recommendation is, is that we renew the medical plan and obviously, the medical is tried, is tied to prescription, dental and vision as well. The life is separate.
Motion?
Second.
There are no questions, I take it? Since we have a motion on the table?
Well, I, I have something to say.
We need a question before we can motion.
There's a big difference between she and Aaron, right?
Well, that's not a question, that's a statement.
We're very happy to offer a smart, a smart...
But we like Erin, we still, we like Erin, we, you know, we, we...
Yeah, but we prefer her now.
Well, I'll be here, lucky you.
That's between Lindsay and Erin.
It's only that, she's younger and, and faster than I, Aaron was around and you are going boom to the point. I like that, thank you.
Gotcha, we're all, time is a virtue, right?
So we'll leave it up to you and Erin who wants to come next time, that's totally your call. Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, if you can, Madam Manager, you have, do you have anything else to?
No, the plan takes effect October first, it coincides with our budget year. We've entertained the increase in the budget and we're, we're good on our end and we highly recommend that we renew.
Call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Diaz-Patron, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, Lindsay.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm a little confused as my order here. Okay, so we are going to now take another, um, item out of order and we're going to proceed with eleven G, please.
Item eleven G, this is a presentation by Illumination Technologies Florida, L L C.
Madam Mayor, we have representatives, uh, of the company, actually, representing Illumination Technology of Florida, Mr. Diaz-Balart Junior and George Moreno as well, and Jake Ryder. And I, Jenna, Jenna.
Jenna Latta, Attorney, is also present. Jay Rosio? Jay Rosio as well.
Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Daniel Diaz-Balart, twenty-nine, twenty-nine Southwest Third Avenue, uh, Suite four thirty, Miami, Florida, three, three, one, two, nine. My name is Daniel Diaz-Balart. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here, uh, with the City of Miami on behalf of Illumination Technologies. Just some brief introductory remarks before I turn it over to our engineer, George Moreno. Um, as you all know, five G technology is, is coming to the City of West Miami. Uh, and when it gets here, it's gonna have big implications, uh, for the city and so it's very important that the city be prepared. And so we're here today to tell you about, uh, a really exciting opportunity, uh, for the city in terms of helping the city not only prepare for the rollout of five G, but providing the city with, um, uh, tangible and, and really remarkable, uh, benefits. Uh, we're talking about security in the form of CCTV security cameras at the City of West Miami parks and schools, as well as license plate readers throughout the City of West Miami to assist the police, uh, in their enforcement. And the best part, all of this comes at no cost, uh, to the city. Uh, so this team, Illumination Technologies, has decades of experience, uh, developing, uh, posts and towers. Um, and, and the guiding principle of this, of this team, which is what sets it apart, uh, from frankly, everybody else, is that, uh, we strive to build relationships with municipalities and work hand-in-hand with cities like West Miami, um, to control, uh, the rollout of five G and also provide this, um, these benefits that the other big telecom companies will not provide. They're just gonna show up and drop their applications and, uh, based on Florida law, they're permitted to start building in the city right away without having to provide any benefits. We're here to work hand-in-hand with the City of West Miami to provide great benefits and to work hand-in-hand. And to tell you a little bit more about that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, George Moreno. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Again, my name is, uh, George Moreno and I'm the engineer manager for Illumination Technologies. Um, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to present, uh, today, uh, the, the proposal for, for the City of West Miami. Um, so briefly, as Danny mentioned, we have, uh, decades of experience in building projects such as this for cities. Um, and, uh, for myself, I have over twenty years of experience building infrastructure for, uh, the likes of A T and T, T-Mobile, Sprint, uh, just in M F U. Um, so, um, our, just to give you a small background on, on, on the company, um, our experience comes from Latin America. We are the, we have the largest, uh, infrastructure in Latin America, privately owned. Um, and it's forty-eight hundred sites, strong, and composed of a lot of security benefits to the city. That's how the company got started, with the owner, uh, providing these benefits to cities in Latin America and it's just grown from there. Um, at this point, we're looking to expand and bring the same business model here in the U S. So now we have offices here in Coral Gables and also in California. So, um, that's just a brief background on the, the team and the experience that we bring, uh, to the table. Um, if you guys are following on the slides, um, I'm gonna be on slide number three. So what can we deliver to West Miami? So, um, we can design, build, and also finance this, uh, network, this infrastructure. Um, and as Danny mentioned, it's not gonna be of any cost to the city. So what is the infrastructure gonna entail? It's gonna be the, um, the poles, stealth poles, by the way, uh, not like the ones that you're gonna see from other carriers. It'll be stealthy poles, they're gonna be blending into the environment, existing environment, uh, of the right-of-way. Uh, you're gonna be able to install, uh, streetlights, they're gonna be also available to co-locate, which the other poles will not have. So you're gonna be able to have two or three carriers on, on these poles, so that's a great benefit. And then to round that off, one of the biggest, uh, parts of the infrastructure that we're gonna be financing and building is the fiber optic network. So that's something that, of course, is gonna interconnect all these poles, which is gonna be the requirement for the next generation of wireless, right? Um, you can't just throw the pole up and not have the backbone. So there's gonna be another important component that carriers, um, are gonna be looking for. And in addition to that, um, we're gonna be providing some of these very important fiber things to the city. So in order for them, for you guys, to be able to grow the network as you see fit as the years go on, right? So very important component, um, and something that we're gonna be financing and providing. Um, so, um, a little bit more details about the specific, uh, project that we're proposing. It's gonna be composed of sixteen sites, um, that have been, um, discussed and picked by your, your department. So the Police Department, I T, um, so sixteen in total, ten of them are gonna be the license plate readers. Um, and then six of them are gonna be specifically for areas where you identified as being, um, in need of security cameras. So if you move on to slide four, you'll be able to see, uh, some of these locations and I'll point out, uh, the, the four. Um, so this is gonna be Cooper Park, uh, West Miami Recreational Center is the other location that was identified. Uh, there's a park on sixty-sixth and twelfth, another good location. Um, then Silvania Heights Elementary School. Those locations are gonna have this security camera system on them. Um, if you move to slide number five, you're gonna be able to see an overall picture of the network, how that's gonna look. Um, as you can see, there's gonna be sixteen sites. The red are gonna be identifying L P R, uh, systems. So those are gonna be right in the perimeter, identifying who's gonna be coming in and out of the, the city. And then the blue ones are gonna be, um, showing you where the, uh, security cameras are gonna be located. And then, you know, you'll have that fiber ring, they're gonna be interconnecting all of these poles together. Uh, next slide, uh, just another, you know, a zoomed-in version there of the parks themselves, the three parks that you see there. Um, slide number seven is gonna show you the, um, Silvania Heights Elementary School. Um, I'm gonna move on to slide number eight, just to give you, um, an idea of what that stealth pole is gonna look like. This is a particular corner, um, where, um, I think this is located on sixty-third and sixteenth, I believe. Um, so we're gonna have a pole similar to this. Um, and we have variations of these poles. I have four to five manufacturers of these poles that, uh, will, you know, will be able to discuss to see which one best fits the city, um, as far as aesthetics. Uh, but basically, it's gonna be a pole that encompasses the power at the bottom of the pole. It's gonna be hollow in the inside and then it's gonna have a, uh, an antenna on the top that'll be able to accommodate the different carriers. Um, and this will give you also an idea of the height, cause I do have a streetlight pole that's right next to it, as you can see. Um, so you have an idea of the perspective on the height of these poles, thirty-five, forty-foot pole is typical. Um, the next couple of slides is just showing you the various, uh, variations of these stealth poles. Um, we have, uh, Raycap, which is one of the manufacturers that's leading the pack. Um, also, we have a very nice company called City Pole. It has these ornamental-type poles, um, also very nice, that, um, also have been deployed in the City of, uh, Denver. They're three hundred strong and the likes of Verizon and other carriers have been co-locating on these poles, um, with great results. They're actually entering the, uh, South Florida market, uh, in all the portions of Florida, like in Tampa. And, uh, we believe, based on conversations with them, that they're gonna have about a thousand towards the, um, the next twelve months. So another very prominent, uh, uh, pole manufacturer that we can utilize here in the City of West Miami. Um, the next one is Valmont, another pole, just to give you an idea of what those look like. Um, and, um, I'm gonna proceed to the, um, the end of the slideshow. Um, the, in the middle, I'm just gonna say that there is a, a basically a resume of the companies that we're working with. This is the fiber optic companies, the A and E companies that are gonna be, uh, generating the, the drawings and the construction that we're gonna be submitting for permitting. Um, those you can review at your leisure. I don't wanna take the panel's time on, on looking at those details, but I will summarize what we're gonna propose here to the city, right? We're gonna have smart city sensors, they're gonna be deployed in the city, um, L P R, security solution. Uh, it's all gonna be done at no cost to the city. We're gonna foot the bill for that upfront and also, we're gonna maintain that for the next twenty-five, thirty years. Um, we'll replace them as, as need be. Some of these, uh, pieces of equipment need to be replaced every so often, we'll take care of all that. And in addition to that, I think that, um, the benefit to the city is also gonna be the fact that these poles are going to be in the city and allow for co-location. This means you're gonna be able to take some control over how the landscape is going to evolve in the right-of-way. Uh, as Danny mentioned, there is the law now in place that allows for carriers to just come in and do this. However, as I know from working with some of these carriers in the past, they're not gonna wanna spend those upfront dollars of capital. They look for opportunities like this where there's co-location, uh, capabilities, right? And they're gonna look at this infrastructure that the city has allowed to come into, uh, into, into effect and to, uh, uh, and be able to be installed ahead of time. and to be able to be installed ahead of time. And they're going to look at that and have the opportunity for you guys to control how that right of way is going to evolve. So it's very important, I think. As you know, you may have seen that they're looking for places like even utilities, trying to co-locate in utilities, not their primary choice, believe me. So this is really going to open an opportunity for the city to control some of this environment. And I think that it'll be, you know, a great partnership, I think, between Illumination Technologies and West Miami in order to bring this to the city. So we're happy to work with you. At this point, if you have any questions, please feel free. And I have my panel behind me that will support me for any questions we may ask for you.
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yes.
How do you make your money?
Good question. So as I mentioned, the poles are co-locatable. So we are going to offer to the carriers a very competitive pricing on locating their equipment on the poles. So remember, fiber optic and vertical real estate. Very hard to come by without spending a lot of dollars. So we're going to be able to offer this to the carriers and they'll be able to keep that money in their pockets. And we recover that cost because we're looking at the long term. We're looking at 20, 30 years. A lot of the carriers are looking at very short term. So that's why they throw up any pole and you'll see the extremities sticking out, the antennas, all that, right? Because they're trying to save money. We're looking at the long term. And the way we do it is, you know, doing it that way is like having the backbone, fiber optic backbone, and then allow for co-location. So we have two, three carriers that can go on the pole versus one. So that's how we recoup our investment dollars.
So you've sort of become a boutique sort of fashion designer in the pole industry.
That's correct.
Sounds good. Yeah, we were kind of concerned that these utilities were going to come--
Commissioner, is your mic on?
Yes.
It is?
Okay. We were kind of concerned that the utilities were going to come into the city and were going to cause this kind of issues. To me, it was a big concern because, you know, we already have enough as it is. So add more to that and of course, you know, it becomes unsightly, although you get used to it. But if you guys can actually provide something that would be, you know, eye pleasing and something that would blend in, which was something that was really concerning me, I think it'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's a very good point you bring up. You know, the carriers are not going to want to spend the money for those co-locatable poles. They're not going to build the infrastructure for their competitors, right? So these poles that we're talking about, stealth poles, they're expensive. They're three, four times more expensive than the typical concrete poles. So for us, it's an investment. But we know that we can recoup it over a long period of time. And we have the partnership with the cities. And you're going to be able to see some of the benefits. Nobody else is going to be able to offer that.
This diagram that you showed, that showed the 10 and then six different--
Yes.
You've already done the homework on that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I've walked every one of those sites myself.
Okay, so that is exactly where they're going to go, where they need to go?
Well, you know, this is the preliminary design phase, right? So once we get into, you know, having construction drawings put together by an architect engineering firm, which we will do right after we get the green light, right? Then we'll start investigating a little further.
Exactly where they're going to go.
Exactly where they're going to go. Because as you know, the right of way is going to have gas lines, water, and all that. So we go through the normal process for any construction that happens on the right of way. So we have to investigate what's on the ground. We do the locates. We also can do, which is now typically done, is vacuum truck. So we can investigate what's on the ground and then be able to place the pole. So all of this is just part of the normal construction process that happens anytime any pole goes anywhere. But even more so in the right of way because that's going to be where all the utilities are. But yeah, this is preliminary. You know, I've only walked it based on my experience and put eyeballs on it and be able to determine where that pole is going to go. But I'm, you know, usually it's about 85% correct, right? Once we get a little bit more information on each location. But it's pretty accurate.
And Chief, you already work with them as far as the license plate readers?
Yes, we've been part of several meetings that we've had with them. And my opinion and that of staff in the police department is that the license plate readers will be a blessing to our department. We had an incident yesterday where we had someone come in and we talked about if the license plate readers would have been in, we would have more than likely gotten the license plate on the offending car. That's what it's going to be used for. It's going to be used by the police department. If a crime occurs or there's suspicious activity, we can go to the LPRs and see who's coming, who's going. Right now, we, I rely sometimes on Coral Gables. They have several LPRs. And we hope that maybe the bad guy took off eastbound through the gables and will be able to get tagged. But not just the security cameras that are going to be around the parks and the schools, but more so is going to be an investigative tool for the police department. It's going to be indispensable, I think, in the near future.
My big brother and his brothers have arrived.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Moreno. You keep referring to a stealth pole, these stealth poles. You describe them as stealth. Where can I go locally to see a real stealth pole installed?
Yes, so there are popping up here and there.
Locally, where, here? A municipality here. Where can I go see it?
Close to West Miami is going to be actual Miami. So Miami and Miami Beach actually has some of those poles because I've installed them myself. So I can provide coordinates and even photographs of where to look at them just by dropping, you know, a location on Google Maps. You know, you have the street view. So actually, the street view is fairly recent. So you'll be able to see those poles if I send you those coordinates.
And these are already working, installed, active?
Correct.
So how many other municipalities in Miami-Dade County have your program?
So these are poles that have been installed by other companies, right? So this is not my poles.
Okay, so where are you working? Where are you working here in Miami-Dade County?
Right, so we're working right now with Miami. So we're planning on doing infrastructure similar to what we're describing here today. And it's going to go from the Brickell area up to Coral Way. And then it's going to move right into West Miami. So there's a logical progression as to how we're building our network.
Planning, so you're not, you are not, you have not been approved by any municipality as of right now--
No, we're--
--that we can confer with and check with to see how it's working with them, get some statistics from them. Will we be your first?
Yeah, we don't have any at the moment. But again, remember, we're just stepping foot on the US right now. Our background is incoming from Latin America, 4,800 sites that we have there. So the business model that we're proposing is starting here. So Miami, West Miami. And we have various other cities that are very interested as well. But we're excited, again, here with West Miami because of the, you know, we see the need. And of course, as you saw, listen from the commissioner, the police, there's definitely a need. Now, other cities, larger cities, already have some of these systems in place. Okay, so this is just going to be in addition to what they already have. But to answer your question, at this moment, if I were to point something out to you that we have built, we haven't yet.
Haven't yet?
Yeah, correct.
Because we always pride ourselves on being cautious and we always like to check with other municipalities to see what's going on, you know, what they have, how it's working for them. And that's proven quite well for us is checking to see with other cities how it's working for them. So what benefit are you bringing us if we were to be your first? What's a benefit to us?
Well, I think the benefit I would describe like this, and this I mention to every city, is if you check now your permitting department, how many applications you may be getting for some of these poles. If you don't have many right now, you will. And the idea is that by applying or installing the infrastructure now rather than waiting until later, you're going to be able to install these multi-tenant poles that you'll be able to point to when the carriers come in with an application. You'll be able to say, well, prove to me that you cannot go on this multipurpose pole that the city has already installed with a fiber network. Prove to me that you can't go on there before you put your pole up. That's one great benefit of being first or being at the forefront and realizing what's coming down the ways, you know. The other thing is that it's going to be much more difficult in the future to build in the right of way. It's going to be more expensive placing fiber optic when it's already a crowded space. You want to be first. You don't want to be last in this scenario. So I think it's beneficial for every city to realize that it's better to take control of the landslide that's going to be happening in the next 12 months, 24 months. And I know it's coming because I've been in conference conferences, large conferences with all CEOs, vice presidents of these large companies that are submitting these applications. They may be in a stealthy way. But anytime that you see an application come in the right of way for a 35-foot pole and says utility, that's what that's for. So having that control and ability to install these poles will allow you to have a much better landscape on what happens on your right of way.
Well, we didn't have a say-so with the legislature. They approved it, as you said in your presentation. Very nice presentation, by the way. So we didn't have a say with the legislation. That's done. So the poles are coming. We have a say with your poles. Because, I mean, to be frank, frankly honest with you, you need us more than we need you because those poles are coming with or without you. So for you to say that, you know, they're not going to want to go through the expenditure of putting in their own poles, I hope you're right because that means we'll have no poles in our city, I hope.
No, they'll put--
But that's not the case. They're going to put them in because they've been given the groundwork of the right of way to do so. With that said, I have our state representative, Javier Fernandez, is here. And he'd like to come to the podium. So if you don't mind, I know you're not finished, but Representative Fernandez would like to say a few words on this.
That's right, yeah. I apologize for my informality first off. I was at the Columbus-Blen game earlier and dropping off my children. So I apologize for being late for what was the portion of the presentation I intended to be here for. Actually, Columbus is happy to report again. So hopefully, it'll be 15 in a row. But again, for the record, Javier Fernandez, thank you for indulging me. I think, just hearing from the audience, wanted to attest, we're seeing a lot of these telecom providers now beginning to roll out 5G technology within right-of-ways. If you follow District Commissioner, County Commissioner Eileen Higgins' Facebook feed this week alone, she's been documenting how the conditions are less than ideal with telecom providers putting in concrete poles, often in the middle of sidewalks, obstructing passage, creating a less than ideal condition. Again, I don't know anything about this company, can't attest to their track record. I will tell you that this is a fairly interesting and elegant potential solution for you to consider insofar as if you can get an aesthetic that enhances the right of way, additional lighting, security, and then the possibility of having them take this company up on the offer of co-locating, you may get a very nice win-win situation here. So again, I don't want to speak to the track record of the company, but certainly, we've heard in terms of some other examples that are currently being dealt with in downtown conditions, they're less than ideal and probably something we're going to be revisiting in Tallahassee over the course of the next year. Because I expect we're going to be hearing a lot of complaints from cities like Miami and West Miami going forward.
So what you're saying is they're coming?
They're absolutely coming. And again, I don't, you know, I think that, I know you made the comment, you don't need a provider like this and--
Because they're coming already.
Yeah, but I think what you may get by way of the end result is substantially probably less attractive than what I've seen very quickly in the proposal that your police department shared with me. So I just wanted to offer that by way of comment. We're probably going to be revisiting this co-location issue as well. I think unfortunately, cities like West Miami, South Miami, that have very responsive smaller building departments that you staff yourselves and do a good job of pushing these public works permits through, are suffering from the sins of some of our larger cities that don't expedite permitting or force these telecom providers to go through a very exhaustive siting process. And so they've unfortunately gotten the legislature to acquiesce to exempting them from a lot of the permitting requirements that existed even as recently as last year.
So Representative, do you foresee the legislation taking this up now in the coming session?
I don't, you know, we've not been particularly friendly to cities, I would say, as a--
Revisiting the legislation that was just passed?
We're going to hear complaints. I think what we've seen in terms of some examples today, unless the industry begins to regulate itself a little better than they're doing from what we've seen in a few examples thus far, we're going to probably hear a lot of complaints. And we'll get some pressure from the Florida League of Cities and others to revisit this, recalibrate the most recently adopted statute. But I don't expect that to be a successful effort in the near term. Again, it's not been, as we've discussed in the legislative update we have, it's not been a very hospitable environment in Tallahassee for cities. Certainly, we've been taking more and more control away from each of you. This is one of many examples I could highlight. There's a balance to be struck here. We all want the technology. We all love to have incredibly fast service on our phones, which is really the impetus for helping the industry roll out these telecom, new telecom services to enhance our downtowns and enhance our business sectors. But there is this area now where we're seeing some conflict. We've seen it, I think, in District 5 and downtown Miami in particular, some very poor examples where there's some very nice urban conditions where the city has reinvested in its Baywalk next to public art. And again, I think it was done in probably the less than optimal scenario. I don't know which telecom provider it was. But again, if everyone has the option of coming in and selecting to have their own pole, you're going to see a lot of poles proliferating. I think this, you know, from my 10 minutes sitting in the audience, chatting with your police department, if you can get a double benefit and the possibility that they may take them up on what is the risk of co-locating, I think it's something certainly that's warrants further consideration. And with that, unless you have some questions, I'll go back, sit quietly in the corner.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
Before he goes, I'd like to say something. I think that the commission should also recognize that the representative had something to do with--
I think he is going to do that?
No, 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 I'm not going to take any more of your time. Thank you for the recognition. We were happy to work with all of you on the--
I thought we were going to bring you up for that.
No, no, I think you did that earlier. But I appreciate you mentioning that again. And we've talked about it before. I won't take up your time this evening. You're pretty busy.
But take one moment now because you weren't here.
Yes.
Oh, okay, Representative, please, let's pick up the check. And come on, you're standing there.
If he was wearing a different shirt, maybe.
I, you know, no. Okay, let's take a picture.
Sorry to interrupt your presentation.
Mr. Moreno, we will get back to you.
For those of you that, we had a special meeting prior to this meeting, Representative Javier Fernandez, we worry about a very large team that was able to secure our $985,210.
So we rounded up the money.
All right, well, you know, slow enough. For our potable water system. We are going to start-- Is this built there?
Built there.
Yes, we're going to start Phase 1. And we will be installing new potable water pipes. And then hopefully, we'll go back.
Ten hundred packages, they're especially--
More money for Tallahassee to complete these facilities. So Representative Fernandez, President of the State Department, Javier Rodriguez, our assistant six finisher, Mike Shum, Mr. Sosa, Brian-- This whole team here, we went and fought for it. Representative Alveda, President of the Shee, isn't it?
Absolutely.
And our water-- Yeah, so both of them. And our next day of consulting as well. They were very important people that, where they were supposed to bring home the money. So we thank you so much. And then, you know--
I apologize to the applicant for this impromptu-- But the thing is, the thing is that I could not resist the temptation because we are very, very grateful to Representative because of what he had done in the state legislature.
Representative, let me hand you the-- I can call him, explorer.
Yes, the commissioner needs a five-minute break and then we'll be on with Moreno.
Okay, we taking a break? Okay. Oh, my God. I can call him, call.
Mr. Q?
I'm on.
Okay, I'm on.
You're on.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Mr. Moreno, I apologize, but thank you for your understanding and patience in allowing the representative to come forward. It was a very special moment for us in getting that money. So with that said, proceed. Is there anything else that we, you need to present to us or?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to continue here. I'll make one statement in regards to the comments that you made, how they're coming.
Right.
And, you know, we're not going to stop them, but the idea here is that, yes, they are coming, but unlike them, they're not going to put poles that are going to be co-locatable. They're going to be putting the poles specifically for their needs, for their, you know, for their benefit, nothing else. And I've seen this before. That's why you have, in the past, when you drive along the highway, that's where you see a tower, and then right next to it, there's another tower, right next to it, there's another tower, and you're going to have, you know, that's why, you know, this is something that would be beneficial to get ahead of that eight ball. Install poles that are co-locatable, that the carriers will be able to utilize, won't have to spend the dollars. It's going to be very attractive to them. We know because I've, I've seen the conversations and that's why companies like Crown Castle exist, right? We're going to be something similar, but with a major difference, twist, and that is that we're going to be partnering with the cities in order to provide the beneficial aspects of having an infrastructure in place, fiber optic, vertical real estate, provide you with smart city sensors. They're going to be, you know, we're just starting, we're just at the beginning of this, so it is important to be first. We don't want to be coming down, a year down the road when everybody's got their poles up and then, you know, at what point are they going to say, oh, you know, we don't need to co-locate, we already have our pole in the ground? So, it's important to be, in this case, to be first. So, I just make that statement and, you know, make sure that, you know, that I put that forward.
Perfect, thank you. I'm going to refer back to my notes on some things that you mentioned. Several times, you said this is at no cost to the city. So, are you telling me that the CCTV program, the LPR program, and the utility cost are all free?
That's right. We're going to pick up the cost for that.
The CCTV plan or program, however you want to call it, the LPR plan or program, and the utility cost?
Correct.
You're going to pick up the cost in its entirety?
That's right.
For the life of the contract?
That's right.
And how long is the contract? Or how, how long is the contract you're proposing?
So, we typically have long-term contracts, 20, 25, 30 years. So, you know, we, we like to have that length of term because that's how we recoup our, our investment. So, we're not here for five years and turn it over to somebody else. We want to have that, that ability to recoup the cost. So, it's a long-term project, you know, putting fiber in the ground, building an infrastructure like this, so.
So, again, you will pay for these, again, I'm sure this, I'm calling it the security camera, I'm sure comes with a plan of some sort, you know, a cost. The license plate readers, I'm sure there's a monthly cost to have them up and running, and the utility cost, which be the electric, the electricity that's needed to run your poles.
Right.
You'll pay for all of that-
Correct.
-for the life of the contract.
Correct. Yeah, and we'll have that on the legal agreement.
It's interesting because when, when I met with you, you only said three years. That's changed since our meeting.
Well, we're going to have a legal agreement that we're going to supply to the city. So, as we've been talking to my colleagues, we've, you know, we've had the opportunity to discuss it more, all right? So, we're going to have a legal agreement that we'll provide to the city. So, I think it varies depending on where we're going and the necessity of the city. So, yeah, I think maybe at one point, I may have said something like that.
At one point, it was you weren't paying for anything, then you came back and said you'd pay for three years. And now, you're extending that supposedly to, for the life of the contract.
Right.
Okay. Now, I mean, telecommunication changes, yes?
I think Jake is going to answer some of the details on that.
Of course.
Yeah, if I could please go into some of those details. Jake Ryder here with Illumination Technologies. So, when we initially spoke about the project, the idea was to provide all the infrastructure and the maintenance for that system. Now, as I'm sure the police is familiar with LPR systems, there is a certain tier data subscription that you get when you sign up for the system. That comes at a yearly rate for each LPR. And for that, we offered initially to pay for the first three years. At this point, we sort of looked at it over again, and now we're willing to keep up for the lifetime of that project with that highest-tier data subscription. So, the only thing that has changed in our offer is actually the data subscription service that we're willing to cover for the police.
And the CCTV subscription?
That will be, yeah, that's covered as well.
And the utility cost?
So, power was the one thing that we agreed would be on the city, to power the cameras and LPRs. We'll, we'll cover, that's relatively small. We'll cover all utility costs to the poles that, that goes towards telecommunications equipment, but if it is towards a CCTV or LPR, the city would cover those specific costs.
Right, I'm looking at sustainability. I mean, because yes, you're going to pay for the infrastructure, you have to, you're going to install your poles, you need to pay for that, but I'm looking at, down the road, the sustainability of the program and the city having to incur those costs.
The only cost to the city, absolutely only cost to the city, is for the electricity to the license plate readers and to the CCTV cameras.
Very good. So, a very nice change from our meeting. Okay?
Yeah, yeah, so, we're, full tier subscription to a national database, you know, on a LPR or CCTV of police's choosing.
I'm sure that makes you all very happy. We did not, we did not know this.
Very happy.
We did not know this, okay.
No, we didn't.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Moreno.
Of course.
I got a couple of questions. Is there any chance that one of these big companies, AT&amp;T or Verizon or whatever have you, can come in and say, look, the energy, the vibration, the, you know, the frequency is, is, is not going to jive with the, with the place where you have your, your grid, your, your poles?
Yeah, so-
So, in other words, they might say, no, look, you have them in the wrong place. We desire another better optimal place. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, of course. So, based on my experience on, and also understanding how the infrastructure 5G is supposed to be rolled out, you're going to need poles on every, every 500, 600, 700 feet, depending on the frequency, depending on the carrier. So, it's going to be close proximity. There's going to be poles fairly frequently around, along the right-of-way. Being that this is just now being rolled out, the prime locations are going to be intersections. Intersections where there's high foot traffic, high vehicle traffic businesses, so that's where we're locating right now, and it also matches with the locations where you want your LPRs and also the security cameras. So, the possibility for having a carrier say that our locations are not desirable is pretty low, you know? So, we're, you know, this is a city that's vibrant, growing, and that also is, has borders with other cities, so you're always going to see, you know, a high amount, a high amount of traffic in those locations. So, I, I don't see that happening, to be honest with you.
Okay. The other question is, again, I, you know, I'm always thinking, you know, something can go wrong, playing the devil's advocate here. Again, the company will come in and say, you know what, we're not going to use your, your infrastructure. We don't like your company. We, we're going to do our own thing. Is there a possibility of that?
Obviously, there's always a possibility, right, of certain things happening, but from my experience and seeing how the trend is in the industry, the carriers are looking for companies like ours. That's why they're going to FPL, Last Resort. We don't want to build infrastructure here, let's go with FPL. Yes, we know that it's going to be an incredible, you know, ordeal trying to place equipment on a pole that has life, you know, it's a live pole with electricity, 13,000 volts, 26,000 volts, but they're willing to go that route so they don't have to spend the dollars. So, they're looking for a company like ours. Now, if you've heard of Crown Castle, I'm sure you, you may be familiar with them. They're building for those carriers and they're multipurpose poles as well with fiber optic, but they're, they don't have a great reputation. They, they really step all over cities and, and they don't, they don't have a great, great reputation for that reason. There's no benefit for the cities when they come into town.
That, that makes sense. It would be a, a big expense on their part to, to have to come in and-
So, I'm giving you just that one example. So, the carriers are looking for companies like ours. They definitely are. So, and we're catering to, to that need, and we're catering to your needs, you know?
Commissioner, telecom companies are, are very picky, so they, and they have a lot of money to spend. So, yes, the possibility does exist that they may not be happy with the location or the infrastructure. And yes, they, they obviously already have the leeway to come in and put their own. Like I said, they're coming. We can't do anything about that. They, they will be here. And my concern with this, I think it's a great product, fantastic presentation, but we're kind of small. We're, what, three-quarters of a square mile? We're called the City of West Miami. I'm concerned, you know, we're going to become the City of Poles because this is no guarantee that they won't come. They're going to come. So, I think, you know, we've always been very cautious and we've always looked at what are other, what are other cities doing, and it's served us quite well over time. We've always looked at what else is going on. So, great presentation. I mean, we're not here to vote on anything tonight, this is simply a presentation.
If I may, Madam Mayor, again, we're not here to vote tonight, but I would like to respond to something that you said, which I, I don't, I don't agree with you on this, but the idea that we have to wait around for other cities to do this, I think, in this situation is misguided because in this situation, the people can come in and put the poles. They're putting the poles. I mean, you talked about what Higgins talked about in Miami Beach. I've seen them, they're disgusting, they're unsafe, but if their option, if the option exists, there's a high chance, even if it's not, you know, totally 100%, there's a high chance that they're going to co-locate in these poles. And if that chance exists, then that's, that's one less pole that they'll put. Now, they have the right to do it either way, but in this situation, we get LPRs that police have been begging for, we get the CCTV cameras in parks and school, and we get all these benefits, and for the benefit that they might not put that pole up, whereas if we wait for them to go into City of Miami and we wait for them to go into all these cities, they'll put the poles up. I mean, we don't have, we don't have permitting delays like some of these cities, like City of Miami and Miami D. County. So, in this situation, it's much better to be first than to be last. So, I'd just like to add that to the record.
Thank you, Commissioner, but I, it's not that I disagree with you, however, I kind of want to know, what's the rush?
Well, the rush is that if they, if they don't get the poles in time, somebody else is going to put the pole, and that destroys their business model because they need to co-look, they need people to co-locate onto their poles. If somebody comes in and puts the pole up, then that destroys their ability to go and, and get them, and co-locate them into their poles. So, the rush is, everyone's rushing. The telecom companies are rushing in to get together the poles in, and these people are rushing to beat them to it so that they can give them the opportunity to co-locate onto their poles, which is their whole business model. So, that's, that's the rush, and frankly, if, if they, if the telecom companies come in and put the poles up and they, and, and they no longer need a company like this or can use a company like this, then the benefits that they provide us will be useless because they no longer can offer it to us because they would have already put up the poles. They, they need multiple companies to come in and co-locate onto their poles. So, that's, that's, that's the rush. I think the rush is on both ends. Number one, we, we don't want these ugly poles, and number two, we want the benefits that they'll come, they'll provide to us in our partnership.
Again, I just, I always like to take a breath and, and pause when I see such urgency. And we've always, we've always been cautious in the respect that we never want to be first, and it's worked us, worked for us very well.
I totally disagree. I think if, if you, I don't want to quote Talladega Nights, but if you win first, you last.
I just, it's worked for us very well, yes. One moment, yes, Commissioner?
What he says makes sense because what they're trying to do is their business model. They're trying to build a corridor. They're trying to obtain our location, so then whatever is behind and whatever is forward can, can be connect, you know, can be connected to their, to their, to their location, which would be here. So, and like you said, that's, that's the business model, so that's probably the rush. I mean, just, my issue is, the overriding issue is the, the aesthetics, you know? I think that's something that we really need to consider. That was a big worry of mine, you know, having different types of poles. I mean, it's already, not unsightly, but you know, we have already so many of them, and now we're even going to have more, you know? I was even thinking about kind of if there was a way to camouflage them, you know?
We talked about that before.
Make them look like a, like, you know, like a, you know, a-
A tree.
A tree or something like that, but, you know, having this, I mean, this is, this sounds really good. But again, I agree with you. I agree.
Take a pause, take a breath.
We cannot rush into, into something. So, but I, you know, I mean, I, and with the benefits and the services that they're, they're giving us, I mean, that's something that we really need to consider.
I agree. It was definitely a very nice presentation. And again, we're not here to vote, we were just here to, to, to listen to the presentation, but maybe we should take this a step farther. Maybe we should have a presentation to the residents and see what they think.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner, I mean, Vice Mayor.
To the clerk. I see the presentation by Illumination Technologies, but I don't see anything in black and white what they asking for.
They're not, it's just a presentation.
All right.
That's all it is, that's all that it is.
Still, well, I will have questions for them.
Go right ahead. You have que, you said you have questions?
Yeah. You finished?
Oh, yes, yes, for now.
Now, according to what I heard, the police is very happy because of cameras. Now, those cameras that you are going to install in this system, how long is the life of those cameras?
So, the cameras themselves will have a lifespan of five, seven years, maybe, maybe longer.
Five years?
Right, depending on the manufacturer's recommendation, so.
The second question about that is when you install that in a city and the camera is out of order, doesn't work, it's supposed you replace the camera, right?
Yeah, this is all on us. So, any, any infrastructure issue, poles, cameras, fiber optic, it's all on us.
Lights, the lights too.
Well, yeah, the lights, you know, it's a good question. The lights are going to be cities.
I don't think these are streetlights. These are not streetlights, are they?
No, you can put streetlights on the poles, they're multipurpose poles. So, you can put streetlights on there as well.
Is that, is that what you're proposing?
It depends on the location. That's something that we haven't heard from the city where you need streetlights, but there's definitely an opportunity also to have streetlight accommodated onto those poles. If I may, if I may, if you don't mind, address some of the points that were being made before, as far as the being first. And I just want to stress this, that, you know, our company's business model depends on being first. If I come two years from now and there's already Sprint, and there's already AT&amp;T and Verizon and, and all the other carriers, it's going to be difficult for me to present to the owner of the company that there's a business model here, where we're going to be able to, you know, get the investment dollars back over a period of 20 years or 25 years because the model by that time will be destroyed. So, there's only a certain amount of carriers. It's not like you're renting a house and there's a million people out there that are looking for housing. This is a limited amount of, of companies that would be looking for these services. So, it is important for us to be first. That's why we're here, because we want to-
My question-
Sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, the consecutive question is, those cameras, those lights will be not a liability for the city because have, should be maintained and replaced by the owner of the pole, whatever is your company or another company that you said comes and forces to do it, whoever has the pole, they have to be responsible for those things, right?
That's correct.
But you will be responsible for the lights and the cameras to replace.
We're going to be responsible for the cameras, for the LPRs, for the infrastructure that we're building. We haven't talked about, about the lights, but that's something-
But let me, let me, let me clarify this because we are a very simple city, you see? Simple city. In black and white, when you go to a city and the city give you the right to put those poles, you will put in black and white that you are going to put the pole, the light, the camera, all beautiful, and then you put in black and white that you will replace the camera if it's not working, you will replace the light if it's not working, right?
Yeah, there's going to be a legal agreement that will-
Now, who pay for electricity of, for those, for that service, the lights and the camera?
So, there's going to be a meter on each-
And who pay for the consumption?
Yeah, we're, we're going to be paying for-
You pay for the consumption, right?
For, for the streetlights, and then like Jake mentioned, there's going to be a difference.
Camera, the streetlight, for the camera, whatever is, and consumption there.
The streetlight is going to be different because the streetlight is just an attachment. So, you have a multipurpose pole, and then if there is a streetlight associated with it, I'm sure the city has the streetlight electrical system that can be tied into, into that. So, you already have a system, I believe, in most cities.
But let me, let me finish my question. You offering in the city, you come to this city or whatever city, you offering as a sweetener or as a benefit, we are going to put a pole and a streetlight, right? And then my question is, once you offer that, you will pay for the maintenance, the maintenance of the light and the consumption of the light?
Of, of the light itself, you know, I'm, I'm going to have to get back to you on Of, of the light itself, you know, I'm, I'm gonna have to get back to you on that, I don't wanna
Because I like to see
A hundred percent, because the lighting is something that is a beneficial item to the city, but it's usually requested, right, by the city, and says, we would love to have a light right there, and it's usually tied into
But I like to know, because it's a benefit for the city, but it's a benefit for the city, because it's a benefit for you to install the, the system, your system.
Right, right.
So according with the system, you don't do it pro bonos, you do it for profit, the business you have on top of the antenna. And my question is, if you have a, a profit that, you should help the city, whoever is the city's water, in New York, or whatever, to pay for those things, I mean, this is a normal, common sense, because you are, you are obtaining some kind of profit business on top of the poll.
Sure, so let me have Jake, he's our financial guru here, so he's the one that crunches the numbers.
The money man.
He'll be able to answer this, yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't know about that, but, yeah, to, to answer your question, I mean, at, at the end of the day, the systems that we're adding are, you know, many thousands of dollars, and when you look at the whole network, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, we do that, and that's just the first time that we do it. Then we have to come back when all the systems go down, year five, year seven, that's another hundred thousand dollars, possibly two. So that's, that's what we do for the city, and we cover all those costs, we cover the database cost, you know, for the entire lifetime of the project. The one thing that we don't do is the utility cost, and so that would be the light, if the city chooses to, to add a light, we'll maintain it, we'll upgrade it, you know, so may, if it ever breaks, one of these camera breaks and LPR breaks, we'll have a guy out there the next day, you know, on a, on a crew truck, gets up, replaces it, and it's ready to go again. So, you know, that's, that's any time out of the year that happens, for the lifetime of the project. So maintenance, upgrades, and the initial infrastructure, we all cover. However, if there is a system that you guys choose to install, such as a light post, and you want that light post to be powered, just a, a streetlight LED, we do ask that the city, if, if you chose to, to add that light post, you have the understanding that you will be, will be paying for the power, for that light post.
But Jake, don't your, don't your polls require power without the light?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll cover all the costs of the, you know, and George knows
You came up here before, you said we were gonna cover, we had to pick up that cost.
Just the cost of the
The power.
Streetlight?
No, no, without the streetlight, just your poll. Doesn't your poll require power to work?
Yes.
So, when you up here before, you said we were going to incur that cost.
So there's, there's two different power costs on the poll. One will be for, not us, but, but the carriers, they require a large amount of power, you know, it's something similar to, not quite, but all of them combined, something similar to a small AC unit. So that's, they cover that cost. The city's not paying for that, not touching that. However, if, if we were to add a, a small camera, which requires the electricity somewhere, you know, it's a very small digital piece of equipment, that would be incurred at a, you know, there will be a meter there that will track those charges for the city.
So if, and you know what you're saying, Vice Mayor, we will pay that cost, that the city pays that?
I know, that's what I'm, I, I know to have the answer. Who pay for the camera if it has to be replaced?
They do that.
Who pay for the, for the consumption?
We do that.
And, what benefits the city needs, because the police is very happy with the cameras. But the senior residents in my, in my Commodore, in the senior center, will ask me, what are benefits for the city, what the benefits are? I cannot tell them, the police is happy for that, because they are going to ask me, what about us, we need to be happy too?
Understood.
Well, for that, Commissioner.
And I don't see
One at a time, one at a time.
I don't see anything in black and white, what they ask and what they offer, because I heard about they won their contract for 30 years, I don't see here anything in black and white.
Well, the contract isn't before us, this is a presentation on their services, what they do, if I can, if I can sum, I mean, I'll let them do it.
One at a time, Vice Mayor has the table.
This is going to be a presentation, you don't ask us, you are not asking us today to, to take a, a resolution and vote for anything, right?
Correct, we're looking forward to a vote at a future date.
So, I can give you some suggestions?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I don't see here in black and white, but I heard that somebody talked about 30 years.
Yeah.
Can you, if you come back with another presentation, can you think about the benefits, the time, so make more, you saw the business with their cafeteria, we have to keep the resident happy.
Understood.
We don't want the resident to be your enemy.
Absolutely.
You want your business to be successful, but you have to bring something, you know, edible, digestible, for the resident, for everybody, say, oh my God, it's good sense, common sense, good, that's what I mean.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner, you have the floor, the table.
If I could put a suggestion, there's, there's two different benefits, and I think two different people answer it. I think when it comes to the LPRs and CCTV, I don't think that they're the ones to, that should explain to us the benefits. The police department should explain to us the benefits of those, because they don't, they're not in the business of selling LPRs, they just, that happens to be the, the tool that they're using to partnership and benefit our, our local governments. So the police would be the ones who would sort of explain to us what the benefits of the LPRs and CCTV cameras would be for their department. The other benefit is the idea that there's a, there's a very good chance that we'll either eliminate or, or reduce the number of polls, additional polls that we'll have, especially the ugly polls that we'll have in the city, and that benefit, they can explain. I think they have, but they can explain it further.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I might, I understand your reduce, but definitely not eliminate. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, Eric, what I want, I don't see anything in black and white, and I don't see asking for a resolution for us to vote.
Right.
So I just want to make it, I, questions to them, and make some kind of suggestions, change ideas, so if they come back, right, they will come back, try to bring, try to bring some more, you know?
Absolutely, and we're gonna be asking for a resolution, and you're gonna have that before you, Commissioner, in black and white, just like you're eventually gonna have our legal agreement, that we're gonna work out with the commissioners, in terms of the details, and your legal department, so that all of this is gonna be in black and white.
I repeat, I want your business to be successful, because we want this city, it's a modern city, and we want to be successful, and we, we, we're looking for a 5G, everything, but we also need to, you know, help you in the way to grow, but you have to help us in the way that we keep happy our residents and the city be happy with what we do.
Absolutely, and I think your residents are gonna be extremely happy.
Two things, 'cause I wanna, I wanna piggyback on what you said, but first, I wanna clarify something, your legal agreement will not be with us, it'll be with staff and our attorney, because you said it'll be with the commissioners.
Well, we're, we're talking about the terms.
You'll be working on the resolution with our attorney and with staff, not with the table.
Right, right.
And Commissioner, oh, I, I agree with you on the, on the 30-year, 20 to 30-year contract recommendation that you made. Telecommunication changes hourly, daily, so a 30-year contract on something that can be improved upon, and someone else can come to us a year from now, something better than what you have, 30-year contract, that's a long time, especially when you're dealing with telecommunications and technology, which changes daily.
Sure.
So, I believe the Vice Mayor made a recommendation that that was a little too long, and I am in complete agreement with him on that.
May I suggest something?
Yes.
I can make a comment.
Mr. Attorney?
I believe that this is only a presentation
Correct.
What the concept is.
Correct.
Okay, now, there's no way that the commission is going to negotiate legal issues. My understanding, I don't, I don't know of any company that offers what I have heard here, so I would assume that this is a sole source issue, because I, I don't see any company that say, we're gonna give you this for free. Just, but all of that will be negotiated with staff.
Correct.
And I'll be very happy to participate, and this will be presented to the commission at some future time, that after they meet with staff, and with the police department, and with Mr. Penna, and work out a package that will be palatable to you, and to the, to the constituents, that you have to represent, because the Commissioner Suarez is very, is right, I mean, you have to know something in black and white. See, I would not advise you at all to just approve something that is not
Absolutely agree, we are in no way, shape, or form ready for approval.
This is, I, I think
Of anything.
I think that what I have heard is excellent, I mean, I concur with the Chief of Police, but the thing is that it's informational. Now, they will meet with staff, I mean, at your, if you approve so, they will meet with staff, and with me, and work out a package that will be presented to you, because as I said, I, I have heard, and you can confirm it, I don't know that there's any other company that offers this type of package.
I can confirm that we don't know of any other company offering anything similar, the reality is that this is an extremely innovative and forward-thinking company, and that's what makes us stand out, that's what's made this company so successful. I wouldn't be surprised if we see folks copying and emulating our model in the near future. I understand, Mayor, that you may have some concerns, you wanna see that, you know, we're already involved, up and running in another city, but you obviously have plenty of protections in place in terms of negotiating a contract, and doing, the city doing its own due diligence, which we're doing right now, which we're gonna continue to do, but the reality is that nobody's doing this, because we are on the cutting edge, we're on the front lines, this is a company that's headed by extremely, extremely impressive and innovative individuals that are involved in many fascinating fields, which we'd love to talk about more in the future, but, you know, I echo the sentiments of the city attorney, I don't know of anybody else providing a similar package, but I wouldn't be surprised if we see something similar in the future, and, and we, we're definitely excited to hopefully hit the ground running with the city of West Miami, because we think it's an excellent partner.
Counsel, I, I agree with you, but that doesn't mean someone, another company, won't come before, behind you, pretty much offering the same thing. So, with that said, Mr. Attorney, thank you for your input.
What I would suggest, what I would suggest is, now that you have heard everything, I mean, I, I don't know that you have anything else?
I'll just mention one more thing.
Before, before you do, but let me, let me finish the concept. After you hear everything that he has to say, if you authorize the city manager to meet with him, and have a package
Formalize a package.
Package in black and white, like the Commissioner
I make a motion for you to propose.
Well, I, I have one, a point of interest, one recommendation, I still would like to take this to the residents, and see what the residents think.
Madam Mayor, I've been talking to residents, and this has been, and I know
About this?
Absolutely, I've been talking to them about this. I've been talking about this for a long time, because they, they approached me a while back, and, and I've been talking to residents, and I, I know that, you know, this is, is a no-brainer, is a no-brainer. The LPR systems are not new, the LPR systems in Coral Gables exist, the LPR systems in Doral exist, Miami Beach is right now bonding out money to purchase the LPR systems, this is not new, and the CCTV, the cameras are not new, I mean, this is something that, you know, the police department wants, because it's security to the residents, this is not anything new, the only thing new about this is the idea they're putting them on tele, on polls, and they're co-locating the, the
Wireless carriers.
Help me out.
Wireless carriers.
Thank you. Into the polls, other than that, none of this is, is, is new, everything is, is old news, just kinda repackaged, so I, I, you know, you can do what you want, but this is, this is, is all old stuff.
Commissioner, my concern is not the LPRs or the CCTV, my concern is to co-locate the, the polls. Yes, I understand they're presenting it as CCTV and LPR, but the bottom line, this is a company that is promoting
But these polls, we have
I, I have the floor, this is the company that is promoting these polls, and they're putting, they're adding the LPR and the CCTV to make it more palatable to the municipalities that they're, they want to put it in.
Absolutely.
So, my concern is not, I am, I, you know, that I support, and I'm behind our police department, a thousand percent, and any tool that I can put, give to them in their toolbox to make their job better, and to make our community safer, I will support wholeheartedly.
Listen, I can
CCTV, completely, I understand CCTV for the security, again, no concerns, but that is, that should not be in the forefront of the discussion, the discussion and the presentation is about these polls, that they are hoping that the telecom, the telecom companies will co-look, will co-locate on, that was a mouthful, co-locate on.
Absolutely.
So with that said, okay, I'm done, now you can, now you, now you have the floor, 'cause I'm done, so I'll let you have the floor.
I appreciate that. The, the last thing I'll say tonight, is, these, the difference between the telecommunication companies and these people, the major difference is that they don't have a right to put the polls in.
Correct.
That's the major difference, and what does that allow us to do, it allows us to negotiate with them on how the polls look. Now, again, I, I already discussed, there's a chance that these, all the telecommunication companies go collude and say, we're not gonna put in their polls. Well, and if that's the case, then what's the difference with what we had before, except now we have LPRs, and we have CCTV cameras, there's these polls we can negotiate, the other polls we cannot, and there's a chance that we can reduce the amount of polls that we have in the city, especially the ugly ones that you've seen in Miami Beach now, which are hideous and dangerous, then we should definitely take that chance, but, again, this is gonna come forward later, so.
If I may
I think, I think we're gonna be talking all night about this, we're stuck, we're stuck in the mud, we're spinning our wheels
Agreed, agreed.
We're beating a dead horse, I think, I think that what, you know, we're stuck in the little things, I think we need to look at the big picture, and I think number one, what we need to do is to let the staff deal with them a little more, a little more, get more information, you know, I'm sure more information will come forth as far as your concern and my concern, okay? He just brought up a, 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 a good point, that, you know, if, if that's the case, we're still ahead, because, you know, we'll have this, this service that's gonna benefit the city through the police department, and those polls, we'll just have more polls. I don't, you know, I mean, I, I just can't see a big company coming in and saying, no, we're not gonna use those polls, we're gonna give you more polls, you know, it's just, it's, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna create goodwill, so, but I, I just think that we need to let staff, I mean, we're gonna be here all night.
Understood.
So, we just, let, let staff deal with them, get more information, bring, bring something legal to us that will answer Commissioner Suarez's questions, and then we'll take it from there. I, I think we're stuck on the little things, we need to look at the big picture.
Yes.
Just follow the, the orientation of the lawyer, they, they will, they will talk to the staff, and that's it?
With that said, thank you, Illumination Technologies, for your time, and your patience in answering all our questions.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Madam Mayor, at this time, we recommend to hear item 11I, which is a request for mitigation.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, what was that again?
Item 11I is our recommendation, request for mitigation at 6257 16th Street. Yes, 11I is a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorize the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of blank from Generations Real Estate Holdings LLC on court enforcement links for court violations of the property located at 6257 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid in blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for effective date.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. This property was cited for violation of operating a vacation rental, and over the period of time that it took them to meet the city's requirements, they decided to end the vacation rental that they were doing there, and that is why they're here tonight before you with the fines that are pending on the property.
Wait a minute, make that a little bit more clear, they, they had a
This was the original first vacation rental that we had here in the city without
It was an Airbnb-type
Correct, without, without a permit.
Short term, okay, and?
And we cited it for the operation of no occupational license for an Airbnb, and the fines that are there tonight are accumulated from that citation.
So, they kept operating after they were
Yes.
They kept going?
Yes.
Why?
Because they had, it already published in the Airbnb site, and
How long, how long did they go on?
I believe it was over a period of a year and a half.
A year and a half, after we cited them?
Yes.
It's unbelievable. You have to make things clear, Mr. Penna, I, I was thinking, you know, a week, two weeks, three weeks?
No, this was the initial impact, from
This was when, when we had all those residents that came and complained?
When the state changed the, the, the law to allow them within municipalities.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Suarez, Commissioners, Madam Clerk, Madam City Manager, as well as the distinguished counsel and officers of the city. I'm Roy Weinfeld. I'm the attorney for the owner of the property, Generations Real Estate Holdings LLC. I'm here with Gloria Gamas. She is the records custodian. Her husband is the, is the, essentially the sole managing member of Generations Real Estate Holdings LLC, the owner of the property since 2016. The "they" to whom, you know, you, obviously, Commissioner, you were frustrated, is a person by the name of Raisel Kogan. I've been recently retained as counsel for the landlord. A lease was entered into with, with Ms. Kogan on November 1st. Recently, I was retained and learned of the fact that Ms. Kogan had been trying to pay her rent during the course of this lease by Airbnb being out without the owner's permission. Yes, sir, if you'd like to, I'm sorry, because you're, you're, you're veering into the existing case. We are here tonight to hear the previous case. The existing case is still not within their venue. It's within the Code Enforcement Board's venue, which is a repeat offense of the first violation. So, yes, the tenant that lives there now went ahead and turned it back into an Airbnb. We caught it again. We cited it again, but that's not within your realm at this point. That's within the Code Enforcement Board's realm. That hasn't been heard before the Code Enforcement Board yet. So, tonight, we're here just for the first, first offense, which occurred around the year 2016.
Mr. Penna, then who is counsel representing? The second case or the first case?
The first case. I, that's why I wanted to stop them going into the second case because the second case-
Because he said another name.
Well, that's the tenant that lives there today.
So, are you, are you, or are you not representing her?
No. Okay, let me, let me clear this. Hi, my name is Gloria Gamas. I'm, the thing is that we had a decision that we, we stopped doing the Airbnb and we did a long-term tenant, okay? So, I know that we're discussing, we've been, my husband has been with Mr. Penna, right, trying to resolve this. Unfortunately, the long-term tenant we have there decided to do Airbnb without our knowledge, and this is why this came up again.
But that's the second case, Madam Mayor. I think we need to stick to what's before you.
Okay, right. So, I just want to be, I just wanted to understand who counsel was representing. He's representing you, Gloria?
Generations.
Or Generation Holdings?
Generations.
Okay. You're not representing?
Right, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, perfect. Now, I understand.
Okay, I wasn't aware that this is the first, in reference to the first. That's why I got confused in the, in that sense. I thought this was a continuing thing because it's a repeat of violation from the first time.
All related to shared vacation rental?
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
Correct. But because of the fact that the first one went through the Code Enforcement Board procedure, they went before the Code Enforcement Board. The Code Enforcement Board mitigated their fine to what it's currently today, okay? That's the one that got leaned on the property, and that's the one that's being mitigated today, the lien, not the existing violation that we have pending now. That is for the Code Enforcement Board on another day.
So, the Code Enforcement already mitigated this down to $1,332?
The first violation, yes.
Which is this one?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, what I'm here today is to see if we could, because I'm trying to work with you guys, because unfortunately, the person that we got as a long-term tenant wasn't a very good tenant, and this happened again in the reference of the short-term rentals. So, of course, this is bringing expense to Generations Real Estate Holdings, and I had to get, hire an attorney because, as you know, the LLCs are not allowed to have, without an attorney. So, I want to see what we can mitigate for this first, if this is the, for the first infraction, and then we'll work on with the Ms. Cohen's.
That's another one. That's another one that's still pending.
And, of course, I wasn't aware that this had to do with the first infraction.
But you, you knew there was, you knew there was a second, or you didn't know?
No, well, well, yeah, because we just got it in July.
Okay, okay.
Okay? We just got it in July, and then I, you know, I didn't know that they were first and second. I thought it was just, like, because she did it, it just triggered this fine.
Understood, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may be heard, and I don't want to take away the opportunity first from another commissioner, but I think we need to take into account that this could become a potentially serious problem in the City of West Miami. The situation that occurred there at the property obviously had a negative impact to the surrounding neighbors. It taxed our police department. It has taxed our code enforcement division. It has taxed the clerk, the code enforcement clerk, my office, the clerk. And I'm going to be, I'm going to go straight to the point on, on, on this. I think we need to send out a, a message that while the short-term vacation rentals are allowed and they're governed by Florida statutes, anybody coming into the city has to have a structure to go by. And our recommendation is, is that there is no mitigation, that they be fined the full amount, because the Code Enforcement Board already heard this case. They mitigated it down to, from its original fine amount. And so, I don't think the $4,300 in question here is enough time to cover, even, I don't think it's enough to cover the expenses absorbed by our office on the file for the period, and, and obviously, the inconvenience to the surrounding neighbors. So, I wanted to, to bring that into the record. This, this whole issue of short-term rentals, while it's allowed, it could become a problem in our small municipality.
Thank you. Madam Manager, does anyone else have a question or comment?
I agree with the city manager, and I make a motion for that. The whole amount will be assessed.
Point, point, Your Honor. If I may.
I have, let me, let me-
Yes.
Put it on the record. I have a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
You have to allow due process.
No, no, I said I have a motion and a second, but I am going to allow counsel to speak. Yes, I just wanted to be sure he knew that I had a motion. Yes, counsel?
I want to articulate two things. As far as the second matter, which is going to be addressed Monday.
But we can't go into that right now.
No, well, I know, I know that's not in front of, of the commission tonight. What I want to articulate is that this, these people have made every effort to eradicate this issue from the City of West Miami. And the issue that goes back to the initial incident, which had been mitigated, and the effect of the anticipated eviction on Friday of this non-abiding tenant, shows in good faith that the owner of the property is completely in agreement with the City of West Miami to preserve not only the quality of life and the quality of its residents, but also the quality of eradicating any type of unknown visitors that would affect the police force. In addition, I would like to make the point that the owner themselves are, and this I can put in the record, are under an undue hardship currently, as I can show that they are, I don't represent them, but they are in Chapter 13 proceedings, meaning the principal, Mr. Gamas, and have complied with the trustee in every part of that case. So, respectfully, I, I completely respect the desire and the taxing resources. But on the one hand, I'd like to point out before a vote is cast, that on the one hand, they've done everything now to eradicate this matter from the City of West Miami and from, by virtue of the property and the action that I've, I represent them on, and, and that's nearly complete. And secondly, that the undue hardship that this commission should give, that these owners of the property have indeed a financial hardship already, not just, I know retaining me is for the second matter and one more issue for Monday evening, but in front of your, your, your fine, distinguished board, sir. However, they do have a, a, a financial challenge and would respectfully request that to eradicate the lien, as I'm eradicating the tenant, would be respectfully appreciated to mitigate it down before more so they can move on from this unfortunate situation, which I know you don't want to see anymore in your city.
Counsel, the tenant still resides on the property?
The tenant currently resides on the property. There is a writ of possession that I docketed today with the civil sheriff. The, my client, the client had paid the civil sheriff of Miami Dade County an expedited fee of approximately $2,000, so that the posting was tonight, in 24 hours, and on Friday, the civil sheriff is to meet the, the owner, locksmith, moving crew, and, and do what's necessary to eradicate this problem from the City of West Miami, as well as a tenant who has not abided by any of the warnings, notices whatsoever. So, God willing, for, you know, your city of West Miami, by Monday, you'll have a vacant property that won't ever have this problem again.
Gloria, do you have any other properties in the City of West Miami?
No, no, I do not. My sister's been living here for over 30 years, but I do not own any other property.
Okay, I have a, a motion and a second on the table. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Gloria. I have a motion and a second on the table. And that motion is to take staff's recommendation. Is that correct?
Motion of Madam-
Yeah, I have, but I want to just clarify. The motion was to, to take staff's recommendation.
Absolutely.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes, we have a motion by Commissioner Blanis and second by Vice Mayor Suarez. And the amount of $4,332.50 to be paid in what period of time?
Generally, we give-
The standard time, the standard time is?
Forty-five days.
We respectfully request an extension through, due 120 days, Your Honor.
I just want to say that-
Don't we have to vote first?
Yeah, we have to call the vote first.
We need to complete the resolution, the terms of the resolution in order to vote, Mr. Commissioner Blanis.
Yes, but even before we talk about the, the amount of time that they're given to pay the fine, don't we have to vote?
Well, no, because it's part of the resolution that she's going to read, so-
You have to present whatever you want them to do. I understand that, you say that they're under Chapter 13 at this point?
Yes, correct, sir. Chapter 13.
Is that the corporation?
No, it's our personal. We, it was, we lost a lawsuit in 2016, and we decided to do Chapter 13 to repay back that suit, and that's what we're currently paying. We're two and a half years in. We have another two and a half years to complete that payment.
But the property is, is owned by the corporation, is that correct?
Yes, but, you know-
You're the owner of the corporation?
Correct, correct. Yes. Which is not, is separate, but in the long run, it does affect financially because we just paid $2,000 to have the, an expedited eviction with the sheriff instead of waiting an additional, you know, month or so.
Let me explain to the commission what, why my question was. Assuming that the debt was personal or that it was the corporation, we would have to have permission from the bankruptcy court in order to exercise any action against the individual that had broken the law. But in this particular case, you're free to do whatever you want.
So, you have no recommendation, one way or the other, as to the length of time that we give?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so counsel is asking for 120 days. I need to hear from the table?
How long?
I believe you asked for 120 days, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
I mean, I, I agree.
Madam Manager, is that something we've done in the past?
That's not standard for us, no. We're, we're giving, unless there is a contract and a, an anticipated closing on the property, if it were, if the property were for sale, most of these mitigations, we lock them in into a, I think we've given a maximum of 60 days to allow the financing of the property and the closing of the property. But that's been, that's not the norm. The norm has been 45 days. 60 days has been granted when there is a pending sale, and there's a contract, an actual contract for the purchase of the property.
I, I know that we've had the neighbors come before us on this exact property complaining about the situation that the shared vacation rental put them in. But I do also understand that Gloria, the property owner, has, has tried to get this under control.
Yeah, and I want to talk to Mr. Penna. We've been very, trying to work with you guys in the reference to getting everything, oh, sorry, trying to get everything settled with this tenant. Unfortunately, she, she start, you know, she had started, we told her to stop, my husband went with Mr.-
I think, Gloria, I think, I think they want to refer to the first, the first issue.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, but, you know.
Monday night, we'll deal with the second issue.
Okay. So, I mean, we've been trying to work, and she stopped, and then she started again, and that's when we said, you know, we're going to draw the line. That's why we're doing this expedited eviction.
I, I'm going to recommend, I, I mean, we, we're going to-
I think we, we have a motion and a second. I think we need to move on. We're going to be here all night.
Well, I want to hear the mayor's, I'm sorry, what the mayor was going to say.
I agree with staff's recommendation that, that we do secure the entire amount, but I don't really see that much of a problem with going from 45 to 60. I don't think we can go 120. But because of, you are, you know, you are in the process of rectifying, even though it's the second time, and there'll be a third one coming before us, I don't see undue burden to go from 45 to 60.
Madam Mayor, let me interrupt a minute. There is a motion, and there is a second.
And then, would that friendly amendment would be to take 45 days to 60 for the full amount?
If you, if you have a friendly amendment, then you should vote on the friendly amendment. But Commissioner Blanis is correct.
Let's call the vote. Madam Clerk, call the vote on the motion.
Okay, no friendly amendment for 60 days.
I, I will make it after you call the vote. We're calling the vote on the amount.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Diaz-Padron, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
I make a friendly amendment to take the 45 to 60 days for the full amount of Now, we, do we have to vote on my amendment?
Yes.
Yes. No? I have a yes and I have a no. Mr., Mr. Attorney, legal counsel?
It should have done, it should have been done before.
That, that's what was always my confusion with this.
It should have been done before. You see, the friendly amendment goes before the vote. You see, you have a, a, a motion, and you have a friendly amendment. Now, the friendly amendment should be before the vote. There has been a vote already.
You just said that we had to call the vote on the motion.
No, no. I said, call the vote on the motion, on the friendly amendment.
Wait, I'm, Mr. Attorney, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
The, on, what we just voted on, it didn't include a timeframe. So, is that pretty much nothing?
No, all you have to do, sir, is just go ahead and reverse, I mean, you don't have to reverse yourself.
Do it again.
All you have to do, you already voted, just go ahead and vote again, number one, to do whatever you want to do. What is it that you want to do? Extend it to 60 days?
That's the mayor's amendment.
That would be my friendly amendment to the, to the resolution, yes?
Well, just go ahead and vote on the resolution of the friendly amendment.
Does the clerk have to read the entire resolution again and add in the amount of money and the, if not paid in full-time?
No.
No?
As amended.
As amended.
A motion has amended.
Motion is amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Can you call the vote on-
Okay, for 60 days, the full amount. Commissioner Blanis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero?
Go ahead, say it.
Item 50.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, we don't need to see you again, and we'll deal with the distinguished board on Monday.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Gloria. Madam Clerk, next. We're still taking items out of order, I believe?
I was, I was recommend, I, I mean, on item J, the, the property owner had no representation, legal representation, and they, they left. So, I would recommend to respectfully request to postpone the item until the meeting of September 3rd to, so they can be represented by a legal counsel.
Okay.
On the mitigation on 64th, 17th, and 11th Street.
That's on item-
Item J.
J. So, then I had here, after that, to take item L out of order.
Yes. Okay. So, item J, is it okay with you to postpone this item until the September 3rd meeting? Are all in favor?
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item L, report and recommendation by the Office of the City Manager in reference to project director position for West Miami Community Center Department.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, there's a memo that I cannot find right now, the two-sided agenda packet.
It was a very-
There's a, there's a report that I issued following the interview process. And basically, it's self-explanatory. The city received a total of five applications for the position of project director to fill the vacancy that is anticipated as a result of Marilyn Mariah's retirement, effective October 31st, 2019. One candidate dropped out right before the, the night before the interview. We interviewed four qualified candidates, but we have one exceptional candidate that I am very pleased to nominate to fill the position of project director of the West Miami Community Center. We are particularly impressed by the fact that she is a longtime resident of the city of West Miami, that she comes with 30 years of municipal experience from our neighboring city, the city of Coral Gables. She has fresh ideas, very innovative, futuristic ideas for the community center. And her willingness to help and be a part of the city of West Miami overwhelmingly had the vote of the committee. The committee consisted of myself, our dietitian, Dr. Lourdes Martinez, and Mrs. Leon, and unofficially Marilyn Mariah sat in the interviews because obviously, her input is very important as she has been with the city for over 20 years overseeing that program. So that being said, I am very pleased and ecstatic to nominate Evelyn Paz, Mayo Paz, to the position of project director. But I cannot do this alone. I can nominate, but it takes the city commission's ratification and affirmation to, for us to move her into that position. So, it's in your hands now.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
We need a motion?
We have a resolution on the-
Doesn't she need to step up to the mic and give a speech?
I'm going to, I'm going to yield comment, first comment, to my vice mayor because he is, he is the-
I'm taking care of the young.
He takes care of the younger group. So Ms. Paz, if you would just let me yield to my vice mayor for comment before taking the mic.
Well, it's not a comment, it's a welcoming. Welcome to our team. I think it was a great selection. You deserve it. You are a very, very professional and smart person and very popular. Professional assistant of mayors in the most important city of the county. She has been assistant of three or four mayors, and all of them were proud about her. So, same thing, your husband is proud about you. And all of us are proud about you. So, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Paz, yours.
It is my pleasure, as I said prior to this, to meet with the city manager and the committee. I applaud her, and I told her it was a wonderful experience to see how she brought the panel together and listened to my advices, listened to what I had to bring to the table, and it made me very proud of my community. And having her sit in that interview made me feel very proud of her decision, even if it wouldn't have been me. I thanked her, and I thanked her panel. I represent the community as one, but I, I represent the community as a whole because I'm going to have you as my support team. And we are going to work as a team today, and as we've always have done in the past. So, to me, it's an honor to come work for another municipality, being so close to my home and being so close to working with all of you. Honestly, it's my pleasure to work for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, yes?
I would like to say, because I've probably known you the, not the longest, but the shortest amount of time personally. I sat on the board with Joe, obviously. But the, I had a chance to meet with you in City Hall after you were nominated because I wanted to sort of get to know who was going to be running the most important center in our city. And I left super impressed. We had a long discussion, a long time. And I was, I was very excited. I left that meeting very excited for what's to come in our great center. So, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm excited, I'm excited to work with you, and hopefully, we'll do good things in the future.
I'm looking forward to working for-
Ms. Paz, you know, our seniors are very, very special, very special. Our center, our community center, not because it's ours and in our city, but I think it's pretty much one of the best around. Not taking away from any of the others, I just, I'm very proud of our senior center. You also have, you also are, have some very big shoes to fill. Mariah has done an extraordinary job in every aspect. However, with that said, I have no doubt that you will not be able to fill those shoes completely and with the expertise and loving care of our seniors. I have no doubt that you are the right person for this job.
Thank you. Rest assured, I will do 110% of myself to the seniors as they were my own family.
That makes me feel extremely good. Not that I didn't feel good already, but knowing that, and I knew, without your saying it, I knew that, from our meeting and just talking with you.
I have to say, I happen to have spoken to a few of your neighbors about this coming up. And you got ringing endorsements from your neighbors, all of them. So, yes, your neighbors like you.
Thank you, thank you.
So, with that said, anyone else?
I'm tongue-tied here. I'm glad you're with us. I'm glad you're part of the team, and I'm very happy.
Once again, I'm happy to be here, and we're going to be a team.
Congratulations.
I'll be here, working with everyone.
Is there require a motion?
I believe it requires a-
Need to read the resolution, Madam Mayor.
Request for a, so at this time, oh, yes, Madam Clerk, read the resolution, please.
Yes, resolution, item M, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami accepting the recommendation of the city manager pursuant to section 404 of the city charter to ratify and confirm by majority rule of the commission the appointment of Evelyn Mayo Paz as project director of the city of West Miami Community Center, providing for effective date.
Motion?
Second.
I'll give it to him.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blanca, a second by Vice Mayor Suarez. Call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Take.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And I am sorry for the length of the proceedings prior to you.
Got educated. Stop there, and I got educated, and I thank you. Every step closer, thank you very much.
Mr. Paz, thank you for hanging out here with us for so long.
Madam Mayor, Evelyn will officially start on Monday, August 26. Evelyn, I'm going to be in touch with you first thing tomorrow morning so we can get rid of all the pre-employment necessities. And, and so, we'll be talking early tomorrow.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Did you tell her she has to come to every meeting?
No. Thank you.
Before I ask the clerk for the next item, does anyone need, does anyone need a break? Commissioner Blanca? Yeah, I know. Let's, let's take a five-minute break, please.
Okay.
No, say, okay, we've been back and forth on the agenda. Falta lo del school resource officer. Todavía, and we have to swear her in, so I'll schedule with her to see if she's available, 9:03. You need to get sworn in at the next commission meeting, on the 3rd, okay? She's at the department, the director. She needs to get ahold of you to do, for me to do the pizzas and the background. Bye, Evelyn, congrats.
To the original order of the agenda.
Oh, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Blanca is excused, yes.
Okay, next item is item six, report of the city manager.
Madam Manager, it's all you.
Madam Mayor and members of the city commission, I've submitted a written report. Tentative budget hearing is scheduled for September 3rd at 7:30 p.m. Every property owner will be receiving their proposed notice of property tax in the next couple of days. This said, we've sent out calendars to meet with you early next week, individually, of course, in our budget last go-around. Therefore, any projects that you would like to include that have not been identified for the next fiscal year should be entertained next week during our meeting. Thank you in advance for your time in preparation for the budget hearings. The next item on my report involves the Halloween festival that is being led by the effort of the mayor and in response to the mayor's expressed interest in what the commission has approved. Us hosting a Halloween event has, we've done some preliminary work for a small carnival at Cooper Park this year on October 31st, starting at 5:30 p.m. The city has issued a memorandum. My assistant, Cadi, who assists with, assists with the coordination of special events, and we anticipate that the event will cost approximately $7,500, which has been entertained in the, in the submittal of the budget under the West Miami Recreation Center Enterprise Fund for Special Accounts, which is account 572428. The, the report basically includes some carnival rides, some decorations, the flyers, entertainment, meaning maybe some Halloween-related characters, and overtime costs for public works, police, and recreation center staff members. So we're estimating, as of this date, that the festival will run about $7,500. Because there is a lot of planning to do and some commitments to be made, we need to, we need a direction from you all this evening as to how to proceed. Again, this is contemplated in the preliminary budget, and the expenses will be basically funded out of the new fiscal year, but we need to make some plans. Mayor, we met, and we basically shared with you what we had in mind in keeping with our first Halloween trick-or-treat event. And if there's any changes, any recommendations, we'd be happy to entertain it, but we are pretty much down to the, to the wire in making these commitments.
Yes, Madam Manager, yes, I saw the pictures of all the rides that you, that you were possibly going to have. We've talked about the flyers. I, I am okay with everything that we discussed. I believe the time, we said 5:30 to 9:00?
Correct.
And that we are going to talk to the sponsors of our previous events, not for monetary donations, but simply offer them an opportunity to set up a table and hand out candy.
To the kids, yeah.
So we're only asking for them, if they want to come be present, and that way, we can do, offer the children trick-or-treating within the park. And we're going to set up the rides. Obviously, at the rec, we have a much smaller area, but at Cooper Park, you know, we will stagger them around, so it's more like a carnival atmosphere, get some decorations.
And in this case, we're not, we're not going to be handling any food or anything like that. This, this proposal would include food trucks.
Food trucks, correct, food trucks.
We've secured three food trucks.
I believe that's what Cadi said, yes.
We discussed what Cadi said in the meeting. And we have them on standby, but I wouldn't want them making other commitments and else, not being able to produce the food trucks.
So are there any questions for-
Sounds great.
The manager or myself? I like what I heard. We're even going to do, set up what we're going to call like a selfie station with a Halloween backdrop, backdrop and some lighting that we can all use the lighting for our other events. We'll just have to get the different backgrounds, backdrop as per the event that we're, we're holding. But I am very pleased, this being our first, I am very pleased with what staff has put together as far as a plan.
Quick question, because I was actually talking about this with a couple residents yesterday. Your idea for the haunted house Halloween theme, is it on Halloween?
On Halloween.
Okay, that's what I said, I just wanted to make sure.
My hopes are this, we have a lot of families or residents with children that they've gone outside, other places. So my hopes is that if we have something here, a safe environment, where they feel comfortable, you know, they come to all our other, that they can either come here before they go trick-or-treating or go trick-or-treating and then, and then in their evening with us at a place where they can be with their friends and neighbors and family and, and a safe environment, just to add to their, to their trick or, evening of trick-or-treating.
Absolutely.
So, any other questions or comments? Okay, so, Madam Manager, proceed with, you know, securing the food trucks. I know Cadi already had looked at some-
We have some quotations, and we'll, we'll-
Different rights, and that's mine. Yes, please proceed as-
So everybody is on board?
Yes, everyone is on board. Commissioner Blanes? Vice Mayor? Thank you, sir, yes. Proceed, he agrees.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Pena, you and I need to talk. All right, the next item is the 2019-2020 insurance renewal that was heard. And obviously, it was, it was approved. And there comes a point in time where the, where the city has to stop absorbing the increase on some of these benefits that are very rich compared to other cities. We have an excellent medical plan. However, I, I would like to come in the very near future and in anticipation of insurance rising costs, which is the trend in the industry, and present you with options for passing on the 9.1% increase in some fashion, passing it on to the users of the program. So I will be coming to you with a plan of action. I have spoken to Mrs. Leon about it. I have talked to the city clerk about it. And so we'll come with some recommendations at a, at a, at a future meeting on this, if this is acceptable. The next item is the PVA collective bargaining agreement. The city has concluded collective bargaining negotiations. The membership will be voting on a three-year contract on August 29th, 2019. If approved, the ratification will either come for a commission vote by a resolution, via a resolution approval on September 3rd or on September 18th, depending on the time requested by the Office of the City Attorney for the language preparation for the resolution. The next item is Labor Day. Reminders to everyone that City Hall will be closed Monday, September 2nd in observance of Labor Day. We will publish notices as customary. We will have garbage collection, and if there's an emergency, obviously, to call our police department. The next item, the final item on my report, is a follow-up as requested by the, by Commissioner Diaz-Padrón and- Diaz-Padron and at the last commission meeting regarding the veterans' preferred parking spaces. Mr. Penna and I have agreed that preferred parking for veterans should be limited.
Do you need, then you, what do I want to say here?
A blessing.
You need for us to give you the green light to proceed?
To order, so we can order the signs.
Are we all in favor of the green light to staff to proceed? All of you, say aye?
Aye, I would like to make a comment though.
Oh, yes, please.
No, no, just addition, I know that you offered your spot up, and I know Commissioner Blanis, I believe, also offered a spot up, and I, I mean, I want to thank you for the veterans, but I'm not a veteran, but I'll thank you anyways for your incredible support and on that initiative. I agree with what she's saying, but I truly respect and thank you for your support on that, I'm willing to give you your spots.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I may, to add to what Commissioner Diaz-Padron said, I am in agreement with the, next to the disabled parking, however, I'm still giving up my spot because we have limited spots, so my spot is still, is still open and vacant for whoever visits City Hall.
Thank you, ma'am.
Perfect. And, because Commissioner Blanis, yes, as well?
Right, and remember, your signs say that anybody can park there except during commission meetings, which obviously the preferred parking would be for you all during that time.
Right, but I've asked my sign to be removed in anticipation of this, so I want to leave, that's still available.
I didn't mean to slow down the meeting.
No, 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 please, go, okay, thank you, thank you. Comment? That is, that is exactly why I gave up my spot, thank you, sir, yes, okay, Madam Manager.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you're done, that was in.
That concludes my report, yes.
That was in, okay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report, vice city attorney?
Item eight.
No report.
Report of the city engineers, none this evening. Item nine, committee reports, report of the mayor.
Okay, do not kill the messenger, but I do have a report, okay, and I know we're, we're pressed for time, but.
We're going to leave you with 12.
No, well, one of them, okay, I have two items, I, yes, I will concede, I will hold the second item for the next meeting, but I have to bring this up because I, I have to, it's time. Publix, our Publix on 57th Avenue, and Commissioner Blanis, I know you brought this up.
Oh, the grass?
Oh, wow, you brought, you brought this up before. So I was in the store this weekend, and the new manager, not new, he's been there, the second manager, Charles Little, I felt so bad, he was, he's really at his wits' end, they have done, he has done, he has exhausted all effort, all avenues for that swale on 57th Avenue. They tried putting those stones, to no avail, they put the posts, the poles, to no avail, to no avail. We have a beautiful store, a beautiful store, and unfortunately, in their front door, in their front entrance, we have a mud wrestling pit, literally, it looks horrendous. He's had customers that have complained, he's explained to them, he's, he's, he's up against a brick wall, he doesn't know what else he can do. So, I agree to bring this to your attention, we've talked about it before, I know, I know you have, and the previous manager had the same concerns, this has been, this has been since day one that they opened.
This is since 2016, and Mayor, you've been providing copies?
They tried their little, whatever those things are called, parking stones, they tried the, he's constantly re-sodding, and the next day.
It's gone.
It's gone, there's a mud pit in front of, in front of the building, so I want to help him, Mr. Penna, can we install, can we install a curb in front of Publix? I mean, there's, there really isn't anything else that can be done to maintain, maintain that, the appearance in front of that store.
The issues FDOT here.
That's correct. The roadway belongs to Florida Department of Transportation, we've reached out to them, they keep claiming the.
Historical.
Historical designation of the roadway, not allowing a curb there, yet when they remodeled 57th Avenue, there's a lot of stuff that wasn't there.
There's curbs.
There was a lot of stuff there now that wasn't there before.
Correct.
So, I'm in agreement with it, I don't believe we have the authority to go out there and put it in, but we've done that before, so.
Well, we're gonna recommend that.
I'm just saying, I've seen curbs along 57th Avenue, I know I have.
We requested it.
You can drive up and down 57th Avenue and see the curbs, yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I have a message for you.
Message for me?
Yes, when that Publix open, that start to happen.
That's what I said.
And I called DOT, and goddamn director of DOT is an anti-Cuban, that's the rumors I have, it's anti-Spanish guy.
Commissioner, 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 I'm gonna have, Commissioner, I'm gonna have to stop you.
The rumors.
Could you rephrase what you just said?
This is a free country.
I, no, I, I.
And the guy do not pay attention when the Spanish people call him for proper situations.
Okay, Commissioner, I don't want to attack someone who's not here.
If I can make a recommendation.
Because the DOT is a problem with the DOT.
If I can make a recommendation, Commissioner, Vice Mayor.
Call the director of DOT.
Commissioner Diaz-Padron make a recommendation, yes.
FDOT is regulated by the state, correct? Can someone confirm that?
Yes.
So when we go up to Tallahassee, I think this is something that, first of all, legislative.
That's not until next year, and we need something before that.
No, this is, no, no, I mean.
The mayor wants the curb.
I see curbs on 57th Avenue, people.
We can't do FDOT, so, you know, whatever we can do is going to be through the state, that's reality.
So how did everybody else do it?
Oh, I don't know how everyone else did it, right through the state.
That was a rhetorical question, that was, I know, I know, that was a rhetorical question.
Do you want to be on here?
No, I'm just.
It's fun.
So, Mr. Penna, what can we do to help Publix?
At this point, the only thing that I could suggest is contact the state rep, both of them that were here, the state senator, and get them to push it along with their district secretary, because we've gone all the way up to the secretary and got bounced back and said no.
Well, it's not a bad idea. I don't know that he said he's contacted them, I know he's contacted DOT.
We contacted the secretary.
We've contacted DOT.
Suggestion, there are curbs there.
Yeah, I know there are.
Why don't we put a package together, take some pictures, okay, and say, look, there's, there's curbs here, there's curbs here, there's curbs here, and, you know, and then send them a sort of a rendition of what we want to do, you know, that way they, you know, maybe they'll see the curve here and the curve there, and then, well, you know, that's, it won't look so bad.
Again, they designed the road, they know where the curbs are, I would do that package, but that package, I would send it to your state reps, not, not that.
Okay, so.
May I?
Yes, you may, yes.
Commissioner Blanis, you remember when Publix opened, one year ago, two years ago, three years ago?
Yes.
How long ago?
2016, three years.
16, three years. Commissioner Luciano Suarez sent pictures to DOT because the former director was a very nice guy, now the director that is there now, he doesn't pay attention, especially if it's Hispanic, that's the rumors I hear, she doesn't like it, but I don't care if she doesn't like it. The guy do not pay attention to any, I sent pictures, I sent, I did 20 times going to DOT and never pay attention.
I think we should go visit you and me.
The only way to do is what the, Penna said.
Not together.
Go to the senator.
Not together.
And the rep, and go from Tallahassee, tell this guy, do it, it's the only way.
Vice Mayor, I actually have to apologize, I didn't know of your efforts, I knew I, that I had heard Commissioner Blanis bring it forward, but I did, I was not aware you were so involved.
I'm tired about that, about the DOT guy, this is a guy that get the.
And I apologize, I did not know of your, of your prior efforts, so, we need to continue, I will talk to both our senator and our, and our House rep, and see if they, if they can lend a hand, but this is something I want to pursue, because I really want to help Publix out with this, so, with that said, I will, and you, you all, you as well can speak to our senator and our House rep, Madam Manager.
May I suggest, and I know that they're going to tell you that their hands are tied, that they're going to need to put language, modification language into that historical designation road.
Sounds like a long time.
Exactly, so, may I recommend that you all entertain passing a resolution strongly requesting, urging that immediate action take place, and obviously, put some language in there that is, is very compelling, that may.
I like it, I like it, what's your table think? Do we like, resolution?
Mr. Villalobos can prepare.
Can't hurt.
You know, the whole reason that road has been designated as a historic road, because, you know, it's been named after Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, and, you know, it's an old road.
No, 57th Avenue.
That was at the request of Guillermo Benitez, the newscaster, who lives in Coral Gables, or lived in Coral Gables, right close to the 57th Avenue.
I stand corrected.
And he actually was the one that pushed very hard for our lawmakers to entertain the historical designation, nonetheless, they can entertain some amendment to the language.
Well, nonetheless, it's a historical road, and, 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 you know, since it is a historical road, it should be maintained, and it should look dignified, it should look good, if, if, you know, we show them what happens with, with the lawn, you know, in front of Publix, we show them the beautiful building, the beautiful landscaping, and then we show them what happens every time, you know, they're, you know, that doesn't look too dignified, that doesn't look too, too honor, you know, it doesn't honor the the historical road.
Thank you, Commissioner, yes.
To have something like that happen.
I agree.
So I think we have to give them, like, something to think about, and then they'll say, well, yeah, maybe, they're right, if it happens all the time, maybe we should put a curb there and keep, keep it nice.
Agreed, thank you. Commissioner, do you have something? No? Okay, Mr. Attorney, can we have a resolution for our next meeting to this effect? You, you understand the problem, you understand where we want to go, right?
I think we'll use the emails that track the problem to the initial complaint date, and, and use that as language for the resolution.
Use whatever you need to use to support this and to move it along.
Three years of it, and the effort by Publix to fix the problem every time, you know, every time.
They've paid for 20 curbs already at the rate they're replacing sod, so.
Okay, so my next item, I am going to hold it for the next meeting, so, yes, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening, and we proceed with the regular order of the agenda with item 11C. These are very long items, please be patient.
Madam Clerk, if I may, just to interrupt your moment, because I know everyone is ready to leave, please, my colleagues, look through the rest of this agenda and, and see if you see anything that we can defer to the next meeting.
Well, I'll just say, because my item P is, unless anyone has an objection to it, is a quick pass, I don't need to make a lengthy speech on it.
Okay, so we'll leave E, any, do you see anything on, I'm sorry?
Item P.
What is it?
Yours is P, okay, do you see anything on here that you think we can leave for the next meeting? I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw it out right.
Our evaluations?
Our evaluations, item R.
So, we're gonna leave.
Q, Q.
Well, first of all, the city management clerk have offered to defer R, so we're going to defer R, which is their evaluation, to next meeting, thank you, both. Q, let's defer Q, item Q to next meeting, thank you on that, I think that's, Commissioner Diaz-Padron says P is quick, so.
Oh, assuming.
Well, I think N is going to be quick as well, Madam Manager, that's just the report for the school police, I think that's.
It's actually a report and recommendation, it involves a resolution, but we need to move on this way.
Okay, so that one stays, all right, so.
You want to proceed with the catering contract?
The catering contract with.
Item 11. Item 11K.
I think we can go ahead and defer to maybe the second meeting in September.
Which one is that, please?
Item 11K.
Right, let me, if you would give me one second to take a look at the terms and conditions of that agreement, because we are stacking up already, or we're taxing the September 3rd special meeting agenda.
Okay.
Give me, please.
And J, we already deferred, right, Madam Clerk, that was the other mitigation?
Yes.
J's deferred, okay, so, go ahead, while you're, while you're looking that up, Madam Clerk, if you want to.
Proceed with item 11C.
11C, oh, but yes, hold on, I have a question on that before you proceed, before you read it. I am somewhat, I need clarification, first reading.
You don't need.
Usually has no discussion.
Exactly.
This is a first reading slash public hearing, how can they be both on the same item, Mr. Attorney?
Since it's a first hearing, first reading, there's no public hearing.
But did we not advertise as public hearing?
It was a mistake.
But should I, after it's read, open and close it, or no?
Open and close it.
Just for the sake of?
Yes.
Procedure.
Okay, procedure, so, Madam Clerk, read item C, please.
Okay. Item 11C, this is a first reading public hearing in ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami vacating, abandoning, and closing the public easement for the Alameda Building Number One, legal description, a parcel of land portion of the easement reserved in the declaration of restrictions, recorded in DEEP Book 2648, page 143 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, and being more particularly described as follows, the south five feet of lots 1, 2, and 3, and the north five feet of lots 16 and 17, all as measured at right angles, and all within block 2 of the subdivision of second revised flat portion of Alameda, according to the plot de ruff, as recorded in Plot Book 44, page 45 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida, as described in the sketch attached here to as composite Exhibit A, a survey of the property is attached here to as composite Exhibit B, and has the legal description of lots 1, 2, 3, 16, and 17, block 2 of the subdivision of second revised flat portion of Alameda, according to the plot de ruff, as recorded in Plot Book 44, at page 45 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida, and lots 35 and 36, block 2, Alameda, according to the plot de ruff, as recorded in Plot Book 17, page 81 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk, this is a first reading, so there's no discussion, this also was an advertised public hearing, so I will open the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing. Next item, Madam Clerk?
We need to.
Oh, sorry, call the vote, please.
We need a motion, we need a second, we need to vote.
I need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second, call the vote.
Okay, Commissioner Diaz-Padron, have you voted? Commissioner Blanis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Do you need to take a sip of water before you continue?
No.
With D and E?
If I pass out, you continue, Jolie.
Okay.
Got it. Item 11D, this is a first reading public hearing in ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, dedicating a utility easement for the Alameda Building Number One, legal description, a parcel of land being the west two feet less, the north five feet de ruff, all as measured at right angles of lots 17 of block 2 of the subdivision of second revised flat portion of Alameda, according to the plot de ruff, as recorded in Plot Book 44, page 45 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida, as described in the sketch attached here to as Exhibit A, a survey of the property is attached here to as composite Exhibit B, and has the legal description, lots 1, 2, 3, 16, and 17, block 2 of the subdivision of second revised flat portion of Alameda, according to the plot de ruff, as recorded in Plot Book 44, at page 45 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida, and lots 35 and 36, block 2 of Alameda, according to the plot de ruff, as recorded in Plot Book 17, page 81 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida, providing for an effective date.
This is a first reading, no discussion, this is a public hearing, open the public hearing, close the public hearing, I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Call the vote.
Commissioner Blanis, have you voted? Commissioner Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Next item.
Next item, item 11E, first reading public hearing in ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, vacating, abandoning, and closing the public easement of the Alameda Building Number Two, legal description, a parcel of land portion of the easement reserved in the declaration of restrictions, recorded in the DEEP Book 2648, page 143. of Restrictions recorded in the deed book 2648, page 143 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, and being more particularly described as follows. The south five feet of lot nine and the north five feet of lot 10, all as measured at right angles and all within block one of result division of second revised flat portion of Alameda, according to the plot derof as recorded in plot book 44, page 45 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida, as described in the sketch attached here too as exhibit A. A survey of the property is attached here too as composite exhibit B, and has the legal description, lots nine and 10, block one of result division of second revised flat portion of Alameda, according to the plot derof as recorded in plot book 44, page 45 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida, providing for an effective date.
First reading, no discussion, public hearing, open the public hearing, close the public hearing. I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Call the vote, please.
Commissioner Diaz-Pedron, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes. Item eleven F, first reading public hearing in ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami dedicating utility easement for the Alameda Building Number Two. Legal description, a parcel of land being the east, two feet less the north, five feet derof, all as measured at right angles of lot 10, block one of result division of second revised flat portion of Alameda, according to the plot derof as recorded in plot book 40, page 44, book 44, page 45 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida, as described in the sketch attached here too as exhibit A. A survey of the property is attached here too as composite exhibit B, and has the legal description, lots nine and 10, block one of result division of second revised flat portion of Alameda, according to the plot derof as recorded in plot book 44 at page 45 of five of the public records of Miami-Dade County, providing for effective date.
First reading, no discussion, public hearing, open the public hearing, close the public hearing. I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Diaz-Pedron, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes. Next item?
Madam Manager, I mean, Madam Manager, did you get in contact with the...
Item K.
Item K?
Will be postponing.
Item K is...
Which is the contract with Greater Miami Caterers?
Yes, September 18th.
Perfect, so we will defer item...
We have a contract renewal date of September 30th, so we're allowed to...
Okay, so we can safely defer item K to the next meeting?
No, September 18th.
September 18th.
September 18th.
Okay.
Then, Madam Clerk, the next item?
Item will be item eleven N, report and recommendation by the Office of the Chief of Police City Manager in reference to contract between the City of West Miami and the Miami-Dade County Public School System for the position of School Resource Officer at Silvania Heights Elementary School for the 2019-20 school year.
Madam Mayor, if we could yield to Chief Avila on this, he'll make a quick presentation.
Thank you for being...
Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you for being with us all evening, sir.
Thank you. It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure.
We lost two.
We lost two.
It's a pleasure to be here.
So thank you for hanging in here with us.
Name and address, please.
Deputy Chief Avila from the City of West Miami Police Department. Again, we're happy to announce that we are at the Silvania Heights Elementary School providing police services, and we have since day one. And the county has, unfortunately, given us this unfunded liability, but however, they are at this point...
Increasing the amount.
Yeah, they have increased the amount that they are supplementing or paying us for the service that we're supplying.
Not 100%, but they're getting better. They're doubling the amount that was given to the city last year.
The manager has the exact amount.
Seventy thousand, three hundred, thirty-four dollars.
So it's more than last year?
Yes.
And this is not a question of if we're going to do it, we are going to do it, so the fact that we're getting more, and I do know that this is always just a one-year thing, next year, it'll be looked at again if the county's able...
This is a one-year contract.
School police is able to provide their own. Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Comments? Nope? Madam Clerk, we need to read the...
We have a resolution.
Read the resolution, please.
Motion.
Item eleven O, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to execute a First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding between the School Board of Miami-Dade County on behalf of Miami-Dade School Police Department and the City of West Miami for the placement of a school-based law enforcement officer at Silvania Heights Elementary School, providing for an effective date.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I mean, I'm sorry, I need a second.
Second.
Call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Diaz-Pedron, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Next item, please.
Okay, item eleven P, this is a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami urging President Donald Trump and Secretary of State Mike Pompeo as the Secretary of Homeland Security to reenact the Cuban Medical Professional Parole Program, urging Florida Governor DeSantis to enact the Ready-to-Health Program, providing for effective date. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Diaz-Pedron.
I'll be quick, very quickly. The doctors from the Solaireidad Sin Prongeras organization, which helped the Cuban doctors who are essentially trafficked for revenue for the Cuban regime, met with me and Yolanda, City Manager, not too long ago, and we came up with this resolution in support of what they want President Trump and Governor DeSantis to work on in reenacting Bush-era policies that allowed for these very skilled professionals who are essentially modern slaves to enter this country under the parole program. So, I mean, I don't know if anyone has objections right now, but...
You're talking about Cuban doctors from communist Cuba?
Correct.
And they're basically sent to other countries to work, basically...
As slaves, essentially. They're sent to places for, they generate billions of dollars for Cuba, but...
Actually, I have a friend of mine that works for KLM, and KLM, the Dutch airline, flies them, you know, like, a hundred of them at a time, all around the world, and they basically go there and they work, and they work for free. So what does the resolution do?
It's an urging. Essentially, what happened is under the Obama administration and the reopening, the program was cut because Cuba didn't like losing these doctors because it was a big revenue booster for them, and as part of negotiations, they cut it. So these doctors would like for program to be reenacted, and I just thought with our Cuban community so strong here, not only in Miami-Dade County, but in West Miami specifically, that it would be very helpful to them if we offer our support.
Professional parole program, motion?
Call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Diaz-Pedron?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
I believe...
Item twelve, consent agenda items, none this evening. Item thirteen, good of the order.
I have a few things.
I do have one thing I want to thank.
Just kidding.
Thank you all, thank you all for your patience, it was a very long meeting, but thank you, everyone that's here. Mr. Ray Anthony, thank you for staying with us the whole evening.
Trooper, ma'am.
Okay, so, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
You actually have the room till tomorrow morning.
They have what?
You have the room till tomorrow morning.
We have the room till tomorrow morning, I say we stay.